Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 23rd, 2024 workshop and closed session, 5:30 PM. We do have a quorum. I'm going to call this meeting now to order, and could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Bryan.
Here. If you could join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. This time, we will move into business items. Item C1, Discussion and Direction on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center Amphitheater Phase 1, CIP #337-373, 37231, and Associated Funds. And Alan Bakalar and Bruce Mulder will present. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. Hold on, I'm not sure. Do I have to join the Zoom? Okay. Yes. Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. As you mentioned, I am Alan Bakalar, Director of Engineering alongside Bruce Mulder, Director of Parks and Recreation. Together, we are presenting this update to you on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center and Amphitheater project. With this update, staff is recommending City Council receives, discusses, and provides direction for the project, including the use of associated project funds. To provide background, the project was originally approved in 2004 as part of the Vineyards at Marsh Creek private development. At that time, the project was comprised of a four-acre winery, a thousand-seat amphitheater to be designed and built by the developer. Through subsequent amendments to the development agreement, the developer agreed to dedicate property to the city and provided initial funding for the project in 2012. Over the years, the scope of the project was refined through subsequent feasibility studies and stakeholder workshops, and to date, 30% design drawings have been prepared for the project, and staff is currently working on an environmental consultant to prepare a subsequent environmental impact report. As an overview, this slide shows the project site highlighted, and you can see where it sits within the Trilogy at the Vineyards. The project site is bordered by residential homes to the northwest and the John Marsh Historic House to the southeast. Access to the site is from Vineyards Parkway. Here's a zoomed-in view showing the various project features and their locations within the project site. More detail on these features will be provided on later slides. However, here are some renderings of the project. On this slide, you'll see an overview showing the various project features. I'm sorry. Here is a bird's-eye view of the project with callouts for the parking lot, event center, box office, and amphitheater down below. Here is another view showing what it would look like as you transition from the parking lot to the promenade and box office area to the right. This rendering shows the meandering walkway, showing visitors making their way down to the amphitheater below. And on this final slide, the amphitheater itself. As a result of limited funds, the project was split into two distinct phases. Phase 1 is comprised of a 750-seat amphitheater, shaded promenade and box office, 250-car parking lot, and a traffic signal at its main entrance. The current estimate to complete Phase 1 is $14.4 million. This estimate takes into account the latest inflation and cost increases in fuel, materials, and labor. Phase 2 of the project is comprised of adding additional, an additional 250 seats to the amphitheater to meet the original contemplated 1,000-seat capacity, as well as a 10,000-square-foot event center. The current estimate to complete Phase 2 is $5.5 million. In summary, the total anticipated cost to complete both phases of the project at this time is $19.9 million. As detailed in the staff report, the current funding sources are as shown on this slide. We have the Vineyards Event Center Fund, which was the original developer contribution of $3,672 million. We have the Public Art Acquisition Fund, which was also provided later by the developer, of $350,000. Over the years, since the initial investment was made, city earned interest from investments using the funds, which totaled about $359,000. In addition, through the Development Impact Fee Program, that program itself is providing $5 million in funding, for a total of $9.4 million. Moving forward, where we are today with current expenditures and encumbrances, we are at $707,721, which leaves approximately $8.7 million in remaining funds to complete the project. As detailed earlier, the estimate to complete Phase 1 of the project is $14.4 million, and we are facing a deficit of approximately $5.7 million to complete Phase 1. And just to reiterate, the event center, an additional 250 amphitheater seats or Phase 2 would require an additional $5.5 million to complete. Considering the budget shortfall for the project, staff is requesting council to consider the following options as directions to provide to staff. Option number 1 would be to continue with the currently scoped project with an option to, A, complete the supplemental EIR process and place the project on hold until additional funding is identified to meet the estimated $14.4 million identified for Phase 1. Or B, which is basically the same thing, except to pause the supplemental EIR process. Option 2 would be to revise the project scope of the amphitheater to fit the current remaining total budget of $8.7 million. As a potential consideration for option 2, if we were to reduce the amphitheater from 750 seats to 450 seats, from 250 seats, from 250 parking stalls to 150. Also, if we remove the box office, reduce the open lawn area and playground areas, as well as not include a wedding space, this could potentially meet the remaining budget. Overall, this is looking like, this is approximately a 40% reduction to the overall scope. Which brings us to option number 3. Revise the scope to provide, revise the scope to build a park or trail or other neighborhood amenity on the property within the $3.7 million of developer-provided funds, and explore repurposing of any balance, including the Development Impact Fee Funds and investment interest earned towards another city project or projects and/or locations. These funding options will require additional legal review and can be explored if council directs. With that, that concludes my presentation. Bruce Mulder and I are here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff, Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, in the report, there was a line item under the budget for $5.4 Vineyard Development Fund, I believe it was. Do we lose that if we choose not to do the specific, if we choose to do something else, like if we did choose to do a park or some other amenity? And do you mind just putting that, the funds back on the screen, if possible? So the Vineyards Project Fund, do we, do we lose that one if we choose to repurpose it to something else?
I wouldn't say we would lose it. That would go back to the fee program, and we would work with council to identify where that money could go, as well as the city earned investment interest. So my understanding with option number 3, if directed, we could look into working with and identifying where that funding, funds could go elsewhere citywide.
Thank you, Alan.
Piggybacking on that, I thought the developer agreement said we had to use it for the amphitheater.
The developer agreement, to my understanding, was covering the developer contributions, $3.6, the $3,672, and the Public Art Acquisition Fund of $350. Bruce may recall, but I don't think it, we're obligated to keep that if the Development Impact Fee Funds came from the city, I don't think it was part of the development.
We should make sure of, I don't know if anyone has a copy of the developer agreement, but I remember going to the grand opening, and they specifically, like when they were selling these houses, one of the sales pitches was, "You're gonna get this. This is what's gonna happen." So, I mean, I know Brentwood has been waiting for this because we were promised it. So let's, can we make sure in the developer agreement that there is no wording different than, like, what is the wording, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that. Is, we are looking into that, the language of the development agreement, and asking our legal counsel to weigh in on that as well. If those funds were to be used for other things, we want to make sure that the city and the council understands any risk that would be associated with that. So we are looking into that carefully.
Do we have the other, like, so with the park, when we ran into the same issue, you gave us an itemized list of what was possible. Is that something we can do with this and go through the itemized list of what's possible?
If we were to consider other options for the park, then yes, we would go through a, I'm not sure if this is answering your question or not, but we would go through a public input process similar to what we did for Sand Creek Park to find out what, you know, the neighboring residents would like to have there, or...
But it's different than that, because this is already planned. I'm just, what already exists, I think that would add time, and we've already wasted a lot of time on this project. I think we know what we planned. We know what was promised, right? So can't we just go like, okay, if it's gonna be an amphitheater, we know we need a stage, right? We can do this. Like, is there a way to do that from a council perspective like we did for the park? Because we already, I mean, it's, it's already designed out, just like the park was, so can we just go through it? Or maybe we just choose what you have here as the alternate, right, to cut some money? I just don't know what that would look like. I haven't seen any, like, if you could put up a design, and what is that actually? Like, this goes away, this stays? That would be helpful.
We would have to, Alan gave some concepts of if we were to downsize and what we can do with that, you know, taking the 750 seats down to, you know, the 400 or so. We would have to go through a redesign to do some of those things, to find out specifically what those costs would be. But that's one of the options here, is to kind of downsize what we have and, you know, put in a smaller amphitheater, but still have the same kind of concept.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I just, I was looking for your approval. So piggybacking on that, for the previous design that had been approved, is there an item-by-item list for the budget that all the different components working together equal the amount of what that projection was at that time?
Yes, we do have an estimate that has that breakdown, and that's where I was able to tear off a little bit to start at least preliminary, looking at what it would potentially look like. But yes, we could, if directed, we could go into that detail.
Okay. Another question is, the parkland that is surrounding the John Marsh House, do we have any kind of, yeah, pie in the sky, right? Any kind of idea, any kind of timeline around when there might be some development into parkland there?
When, so the question, the timeline of when the state park will move forward to develop the park, I do not have that timeline.
I'm not surprised, by the way. I just had to put it out there that, I mean, that there is a park that's, that's being projected in that, like, in that direct same area. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I haven't heard any movement as of late, and understanding the California State budget, I don't anticipate that they would be moving forward anytime soon.
And I think for that matter, it's really more about the red tape and bureaucracy than it is about the money, because it was, a lot of it was already, you know, funded or projected or budgeted. But like I said, I didn't, I didn't expect an answer as much as wanted to put that out there, that that is potentially going to be down the road. On the subsequent environmental impact report, what, what's the, what would be the timeline if that is approved? What different impacts, what are the changes that are prompting some of the stuff that's happening with that?
Katie, feel free to stop me if I go too far, but the supplemental impact, the subsequent impact, impacts that we're identifying, they, they do include various things. We were looking specifically at noise concerns, so there is some mitigation around that. There is, I would say that's kind of the major one, was the noise. There was a look at the traffic. The traffic study, without going into much detail, it, it did not identify any additional impacts. We, I had mentioned that the project was already including the construction of a traffic signal. The, but those are the two big takeaways. So there is, as far as the sound mitigation, there is, there's going to be some redesign to reorient the amphitheater such that the sound would not affect the adjacent residents. So that's going to cost a little bit more, but this, these, these numbers do reflect some of that, that work and effort.
Okay. And then taking into consideration some of the mitigations to traffic impacts on Vineyard Parkway that we've been discussing recently, would that have any impact on the mitigation through the subsequent EIR, if I'm saying that correctly?
I would say there's, from what I recall from the traffic study, there was nothing that talks about, there was no, there was no impacts identified by the amphitheater project.
Okay, because I know there was like a lot of talk about Vineyards Parkway and about future projections of problems based on the amphitheater and blah, blah, blah. So I wasn't sure if there was any part of that that could be overlapped into the new studies, like something that looked at both instead of just one or the other separately?
We could definitely look at that. I think once we're done with the administrative draft review, we're still waiting, fine-tuning, picking a few things towards, as we move forward, but ultimately, the, there will be a chance for the public to review the document, and we'll, we'll see what's in, what's in there.
Okay. I think that's it for me now. Thanks.
Okay. Any further clarifying questions of staff? At this time, we'll open public comments and move, Margaret?
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the chambers first, then those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And we did receive one written public comment on this item, which has been posted on the city's website. I have one person in the chambers, one speaker card so far. I'll call on Rita.
So I'm not, I've never done this before, so sorry. My name is Rita DiTarr, and I live at Trilogy and the Vineyards, right off of Meawak and Vineyards Parkway. My concern is with the traffic. As it is right now, we have burnout, quite a few of them, right at Vineyard Parkway and Meawak and Vineyards and Marsh Creek. And I could be wrong, but I'm gonna make this leap that if we have lots more traffic through there, there's gonna be seeing, they're gonna see, oh, boy, is a fun place to do this at. So I'm just wondering if, and if there's been any thoughts on possibly putting the, the speed bump things through that, in that area, in those two spots, you know, super easy, just to kind of put those in there so that we're not having an increase in activity there. And I, I do feel like there needs to be some kind of consideration of the traffic there, even if there's only 400 people going through there, only. That, that's a lot of people coming through in an area that does not get that much traffic right now. So that's my concern. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Mark Windsor. I'm a resident of Trilogy at the Vineyards as well. And professionally, I have 35-plus years of experience in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, so I'm pretty familiar with what's going on with the studies, although I don't know what this current status is. Just one comment for sure is based on what was presented tonight. The city will have to include these alternatives in the Supplemental Environmental Impact Report. CEQA requires this anyway, that if you have a reduced-scale project that would reduce some of the impacts, that you would need to have that evaluated in the document, as well as the so-called no-project alternative, which is to say if the proposed project were not constructed, what would happen at the site. And possibly, one of those could be one of these alternatives that you all have put forward. Like other residents at Trilogy, we have a good deal of concern about the environmental effects of the project, particularly the noise and traffic. I'm a little bit surprised to hear that they, the consultant found no traffic impacts. The reason we're concerned about this is because being an amphitheater, it is pretty well clear that most of the activities are going to be focused on the summer months, or at least the period, the non-rainy period, which means that these impacts start to get focused and concentrated in a relatively small amount of time compared to a normal, like theater or something, where it would be going around all year, year-round. So the concern is that we could end up with some, what I believe might be, potentially could be, significant unavoidable impacts of the project. And those impacts would require, if they are identified, a statement of overriding considerations to be made by this council that says the, the project, either it's mandated, which I don't think it is, or two, that there is enough reason to build this project, that the benefits of the project greatly outweigh those significant unavoidable impacts. Now, that gets into some really kind of interesting stuff, and I'm, time is almost up here. I will say, the other issue that we have, which is related perfectly to this, to the EIR, is the economics of this project. There is a good deal of concern about whether or not this could end up some, being something that could be a drag on the economy of the community, particularly taxpayers, but even...
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Bryan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. My name's Brian Oftedall, and I'm a resident of Vista Dorado. I was hoping that a number of my neighbors were gonna make it here this evening, but due to the timing and work and traffic and everything else, it's looking like I'm here solo. But I do have my neighbors from Trilogy, and it's sounding like, I've had a number of conversations with folks. I've shared via our Vista Dorado Nextdoor site and our Vista Dorado Facebook site, that this meeting was going on this evening, and that you were all looking for public comment regarding concerns. I was very much initially in support of this project. I still, you know, like the, the value of the tax base coming into the city. However, the, the various iterations of the reports over the last, whether it's two decades or however you want to look at it, one decade, they've changed. And I've seen some of the, some of the things that Shay has distributed. I've seen some of the things prior to the transition of Los Madanos College, when it was gonna be on the other side of the street. There's been some artistic renditions of a fountain being there when some of the property owners first purchased. So there's been a lot of changes. There's still a lot of concern about traffic. Obviously, we've had the fatality recently, and that sort of highlights or re-highlights some of the issues there. When we have the accidents on Highway 4, we've had traffic diverted up Vineyards Parkway, which increases the traffic there. Some of the residents that I've spoke with, one of the families came from Santa Clara County, and they had an event center down there. One of the things they struggled with was the traffic coming in and out, getting in and out of their community when there was an event going on, and that was one of their concerns. Another concern is where they live in our community, they already get the, the noise and/or the sound of the events, and even though a lot of it is pleasant, coming from Trilogy, a lot of those weddings or special events there, they're concerned, the term was used, a tornado of sound coming, basically getting it from this direction and now from that direction. But I would suggest traffic is still a huge concern, safety and security, not having the, the fifth beat being up there. We have had some recent break-ins, property windows being smashed out and property being stolen. There still are those concerns that were shared at the last town hall meeting, or where we were able to provide information regarding potential unhoused residents coming up there, garbage. I think I'm gonna close it out at that. I've got 25 seconds left, but I appreciate the time, and I do still feel that there are mitigation efforts that would need to, to play out prior to making any further decisions. Thank you for the opportunity.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have one hand raised on Zoom. I'll call on Carolina. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Two things. Number one, once again, who is doing these traffic studies? Because an extra 400 cars, let's say the event starts at 7:00 PM and people get there around 6:00. That is a huge impact to that area, and that area was not built for this. And then number two, but you know, let's say we can mitigate the traffic coming in from different areas to the amphitheater. The question is, have we looked at grants from the state or from organizations that promote the arts and music? Because we, we, we can have a variety of entertainment come to Brentwood and play in the amphitheater that would probably meet the needs of such, said grant to help offset costs. But yeah, so those are the two concerns that I have, that, you know, definitely the, I don't know how the traffic study was done, but that doesn't sound right. If you add 400 cars at any given time to any given neighborhood, that is a huge impact. So I can't understand how there is no impact. I just know, I live across the street from Pioneer, and when there's an event at Pioneer, trying to get out of my neighborhood onto Empire is a challenge, because people park in our neighborhood, they park on Empire, they park down Apricot, and it's, it's just a mess. But again, you know, this would be a great opportunity for Brentwood. We don't really have too much in terms of entertainment. Like, we have, during the summer months, we have the bands at the park, which are great, if it's not 114 degrees. We have some, some establishments that provide live music, like Coca-Cola Wine Bar in the Emporium. But then we don't have much else going on in Brentwood, so people have to leave and go to Concord. I wanted to go see Journey at Concord, and unfortunately, it didn't work out, but that was the only place I could go see them. Like, we have to leave Brentwood, we have to go somewhere else to eat, and so the tax revenue that we are losing by not having an arena where we can have entertainment is substantial. And those are my two conflicting comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised in Zoom and no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. Let me compose myself. Carolina is always educational and interesting to listen to. It's, it's great that she has such a well-rounded observational talent. So let's move into council discussion. There's been a lot of input regarding this. I will say that this process has been going on for nearly 20 years now, and Councilmember Mendoza? Mendoza.
Yeah. I don't want to see this killed. I think it's a huge asset for our community and our economic development in the long run. I think there is mitigations that we could put in place for the traffic. You know, and I spoke to some of your neighbors too, and I think people's concern is, is this part of our open-space layover? Is it? So they can't build housing on it, ever? Because that's our concern, is that if we don't do this, you know, someone, I mean, if the state bills change, then they could put housing. And that's what the feedback I got is, I would rather see this any day than housing. So I think that's one of the concerns, but it's something we've been promising for over 20 years, right? Like, it's, it's some, and I think, I mean, our schools are looking forward to it, our kids are looking forward to it, some, some of the singers at Trilogy are looking forward to it. So I just think, I would like to figure out how to take some stuff out so that we can afford it. I don't think we should go into debt forever for it. And then if someday we get more money, or we find grants that can match stuff, then we talk about then. But I don't want to put, like, you know, you're right, we don't want to risk our financial health that, you know, Carrie and the team has worked so hard on. But I think that there's probably a happy medium somewhere so that we don't lose this opportunity for our residents.
Councilmember Orleman.
More than a comment, I have a quick question. Carrie? Did, would the operating costs, what we're considering yearly for the amphitheater, should it be built? What are we kind of allowing for that right now?
So right now, we have about $400,000 in our projections. This goes back to some feasibility, feasibility studies that were done maybe four, five years ago. There were some presentations that were made, and the consensus was that we would have an operating deficit of about $400,000, or the general fund would have to subsidize about $400,000 at that time. I can't remember exactly what size that, that number was for, but that's the number that we were given at that time, 400,000 per year.
So we're talking about building the amphitheater with the funding that is slightly below where we're at, and then adding a $400,000 a year budget item to take care of it?
But that's 400,000 fully built out, right? Like, if we're not fully built out, it probably won't be the 400,000. It's depending on where we end up.
Yeah, it would depend on the size of the projects. I wish we had it handy now, but there were estimates that were given. I think there were two different scenarios that were presented, if I remember correctly, and there were dollars on each of those. I just, I can't recall specifically which was for which size.
So again, another question now. If the concern is housing, and we spend or use this money to build, I don't know, a park, park courses, however we end up looking at it, that would preclude houses from being built there because we've already built on it, correct? Yes, no, maybe?
One way to answer the question is, it is currently incorporated into the Measure Q. So it's supposed to be open space, but what we haven't spent enough time on is looking at the underlying zoning, if there is any entitlements currently allowed. So we'd have to spend some time looking at that to confirm residential's not allowed. One other consideration too, is if you shrink the amphitheater size, that may also shrink the market of what talent you can bring, and what kind of revenues you can produce to help offset this expenditure that is an ongoing consequence to maintain and keep up the standards for the facility. So depending on how much you shrink it, that changes the revenue projections as well.
And in follow-up, what are or what were the revenue projections?
We'd have to go back, and again, that study's probably what Bruce, five years old, Carrie was thinking?
Yeah, the, we'd have to go back and look. So we had some feasibility studies that were done before, and the feasibility study really looked at, for this to be viable, cost-recovered amphitheater, that it had to have a much larger scope of size, and this particular scope of 1,000 seats and something that fits the character of that, of the residential neighborhood around it, did not meet what the feasibility said was recommended for something that was cost-recovered. So by shrinking it down even to the 1,000-seat size and scope, makes it that it's much more kind of niche kind of markets and kind of programming that is going to go in there, and really limits your ability to cost-recover and program with just the number of people that comes to an amphitheater setting. So if it's shrunk down even more, we have to also look at what those variables are. So I, we'd have to really look carefully at revenue projections, but it would be very challenging to have even this size amphitheater be 100% cost-recovered. You know, looking at additional foundations and other areas for revenue makes sense, but I can't tell you right now that a 1,000-seat or a 450-seat is gonna, is going to be fully cost-recovered with just the ongoing maintenance of the landscaping and also the cost for, you know, operation of the facility.
So in the past, if I recall, we also talked about community benefits, like the local nonprofit theater troops, the dance troops, the school choirs, and the school theater troops, that kind of thing. Recognizing that's not, not gonna be cost recovery, there would still be benefit, like that kind of benefit to the community if the project was shrunk?
Yes, absolutely. It would be a community benefit to be used by community theater, nonprofits, the schools, different groups to be able to use the amphitheater for such. And if it's a 450-seat, you can still accommodate quite a few different kinds of programming there.
Okay. There's been some talk about the 400 cars. Can we, can we get a little, dive a little deeper into the impact of the 400 cars and where that, where that, where that fit into the EIR results in the traffic study?
Well, we, we mentioned 450 seats, so I think that when we talked about a smaller amphitheater, it was 150 spaces, so not necessarily 400 cars. Is that correct, Alan?
Just to, yeah, the original plan, or the current design for the project is for 250 vehicles to be parked onsite. Through the subsequent EIR process, we heard from the community the desire to actually increase that parking lot in size, because they weren't, they were concerned about the amount of vehicles spilling over and looking for parking elsewhere. So we, we did look at restricting that parking. Ultimately, I mean, not getting too deep into the traffic study, the part of the reasons why I did not find any traffic impacts is considering the timing of the in-and-outs. A lot of the release of cars and vehicles would occur at the later evening hours, when traffic tends to be a lot less on the streets. So that's part of the reason, and as far as coming in, and on top of that, a lot of the events that are being proposed, at least the larger scale events, they're, they're happening more on the weekends and, and the evenings. So that, those are some just broad stroke ideas of why no impacts were identified.
Okay. It, it definitely does concern me as far as the, the breakdown of what the developer impact fees versus the developer fee specific to this project, and what any kind of restrictions that would be around uses elsewhere. This was dedicated funding, and I get concerned about trying to use it elsewhere and still, and falling within what is allowable. I had that concern. Can someone answer the question that one of the callers had about grants? If we've looked into arts-specific grants, especially if we're looking at schools and nonprofits, theater troops, that kind of thing?
We have not to this point. I think the feasibility study does say, you know, like, like the Leshur Foundation is example of a foundation that supports cultural arts and programming. Those are the kinds of foundations that we could look at. We need to have a, a facility and a product that's a little bit more farther along to really get into that, but that's something that we would look into.
Okay. And then I very definitely would be concerned about the Measure Q uncertainty that we're talking about. We do hear constantly from residents that, that they don't want more housing, especially where there's already traffic hiccups. That area for sure has been concerned about Vineyards Parkway. So I think we have to be very clear on that as a risk, and, and what level of risk that is. If we don't use it for this particular use, are we gonna end up then, you know, getting into that scary territory of someone's gonna take over and force you to build, you know, Skyrise Apartments there and that sort of thing? And I know there's not really a clear answer to that either. I just-
Just one quick thought is, the city owns the property, and so we get determined, we don't have to surplus it, we don't have to sell it per state laws, like some of the other properties we've been talking about. So we can control most of it unless some state law changes that.
Which is the big deal. The state laws keep changing on us, and, and year to year, it's like we lose control. Thank you.
Councilmember Pierce.
Thank you so much. And thank you so much for all the public comment. It was very helpful. I really do, I'm kind of sad that we're here to discuss, what, what do we do? Do we kill the project? Do we change it, amend it? It was one of the things I was most excited about. I was, when I first came onto council, I was a little disappointed in the size of the project already. So to reduce the size makes me even more sad, and to consider that as an option. I, I was elected by residents, so I reached out to residents after seeing this agenda item and going through our little meeting to go over some of the items. And here, here's some of the feedback from residents I'd like to share that I received when speaking to them. I received a comment from a gentleman by the name of Ray, who said, "We should make it a multipurpose space with outdoor lights, seating, and eating area, very similar to the food truck parks to promote community engagement and tax revenues." He actually sent me a really cool rendering of an actual park of food trucks, and it has seating area and a little area in the back with toilets, and it was really, really nice. So I, I wanted to share his comments. I did receive another resident who said, "We should make it a conference center." And they said, "If we need more hotels, why wouldn't we promote a location or, or activity that would, would necessitate the, the need for more hotels?" So they said, "Put, think about putting an enclosed conference center. The only thing that we have close to that would be right here near City Park, and it is not big enough to host events for a conference center." There was also suggestions of bringing back the idea of making it a location for a state-of-the-art, all-new senior center. I know that's a bad word to talk about moving the senior center, but someone suggested that. And so those were my three suggestions that I got from residents. One of the things that, when I saw this in the staff report, I'm, I'm not excited about is another park. It doesn't, it would just wouldn't generate income for us, and it, it would be a little, someone's, oh, another resident said, "Well, we already have a dog park that's, that's near that area," and it, it's actually a really nice dog park. They were walking their dog as they told me about it. And they said, "We don't need another one. We don't need another park. We have enough parks. And you guys are building the sports, the Sand Creek Sports Complex not too far from there, so why would we add another park space?" So, so my thoughts here, that I just wanted to start engaging is, one, I'd love to see if staff can go back and give us some ideas about thoughts of what we could do in that space, what revenues generating if it was reduced, and who would be the benefit. Parks, you know, I know we're looking at generating income and revenues. Parks generate joy. So I'd like to find out if we do reduce the size, maybe taking away the playground area, maybe taking away just the barn and reducing the size, what type of revenue generating income we can anticipate seeing? Because I do like the second commenter, I can't remember your name, sir, but I do appreciate that you said, "Hey, what are we gonna do in the winter months? Is it gonna just be a bunch of weeds popping up, ground's not kept, nobody's gonna be out there?" You're absolutely right. And then we'll hear, we'll see all the hoopla in the summer months. I also would like to find out it, what would hap, what other type of options we have to place there, besides just the amphitheater, or maybe if we went really small on the amphitheater that would accommodate our students, or our theater groups to do small theatrical performances? What other things we can do in that space to kind of make it, still have a smaller amphitheater, but do something a little different and unique to Brentwood? The other idea that I had, and I'll, I know you guys are like, "Lady, get off of this," but I always bring up youth center. And, I mean, lovely space. I know it's not as accessible. I know there's been conversations about, well, what about down here, but considering making it an area where we could do something, or, or there is enough resources to build our youth center? And the last little thing, because I have a bunch of notes here. I think that is, oh, is it possible as a different option to, so that we can stay true to what we've stated we wanted to do, what we've been planning? Is it possible to break this into three phases instead of two phases? So we do just the amphitheater and seating first phase, and, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna sit here and pretend to be one about how are we gonna break the phases and tell you how to do your job? But is it possible to, to figure out a way where we can do this over a stretch of time, where we can work with the money that we have and make it functional, kind of like what we're talking about doing with the sports complex, but make it a functional area for usage on a smaller scale, still sticking to the integrity and the plans that we created, but break it up over three phases instead of two?
And can I just follow up on that? And I say, I think that directly relates to this whole idea of the itemization and the priorities. And I think that would, those two things together, I think would be a really good, really good input for us to make decisions.
And the other thing you mentioned that I think, I think we talked about it during one of the meetings, and we've talked about this before. I think, didn't we talk about food trucks or something like in the parks? So we've talked about, they could use the parking lot for all of that area. So that, I mean, I think that that's possible with, even with the three phases, using the parking lot for that would be great.
I don't know if anybody's gone to when they have it at the senior center. Yeah, it's amazing when the food trucks come. It's electric, it feels very community-based. So the gentleman who shared that with me thought it was like a great idea to bring it. I don't know how residents would feel about a whole bunch of food trucks coming up to Trilogy and a bunch of cars coming up there to eat, but it, it's really nice when you go to the water park and do it. The last thing I did forget to add was, have we considered in addition to grants? Because I, thank you, Carolina, for that kind of bipolar suggestion you gave us. It was, it was really great, so I appreciate that. But the little, one of the additional suggestions is outside of grants, partnership with entertainment groups like Live Nation. Like you said, Leshur Center of the Arts, like the foundation such as that. But I think Councilmember Mendoza brought up when we talked about the sports, sports complex ads and advertising, sponsorships, yeah. So possible, like, you know, I don't know, someone has it in name for a certain amount of times to give us the additional funds to check into that, to see if we can, you know, do something like, like that as well.
Councilman Orleman. You were reaching, okay. Vice Mayor?
I was just gonna mention, one of the things that I was, I was thinking about as we were talking about this is, in the initial phase, potentially not doing like a paved parking lot, but more like the gravel, just to get things started, so that it's not a mess, but it's not as expensive. Like we, like at the sports park, we've talked about those kind of, like, just start it and then look at what it's gonna, you know, what it's gonna do for itself. But to make it an affordable option that still has some benefit initially to the community, and potentially even just brings more and more interest that maybe will initially bring revenue, but still keep things workable. I mean, I, we have to stay on top of all of the impacts and, and do whatever we can to mitigate them for sure. But that's different. We can't, right now, we can't realistically determine what they are without knowing the direction we're going.
And I understand the ongoing operating expenses being a concern, but at the end of the day, our end user is the resident. So I think that that's one of the reasons I want a budget subcommittee. We really need to get into all of the line items. What do we cut? Where are we overspending versus other cities? Where are we not spending enough? But at the end of the day, it's, what do our res, how do we best help our residents? And I just think this is such an asset, that any other city would be dying to have the opportunity to do it. And, you know, we've been waiting a long time for this. It's, you know, you know. And I think if we were, if we were to consider cutting it, we should just cut it when we were reviewing the project, when it came to council to approve the project, because then a different negotiation would have happened back then. So I, I understand the concerns, but I think there is opportunities. And I think that, you know, if we end up on the budget committee, we can go through all of that in line items and see where, where those opportunities live.
So it sounds like we don't want to kill this. So I'd love to make a motion if, oh, I'm sorry.
Before I ask for a motion, Your Honor, I, a lot of what everyone has said is really, it really resonates, resonates. I personally have lived in a community that was very near something that is not dissimilar to what is designed. And once you've lived there for a while, and the community is able to iron out all the bugs of usage, it really was a great asset that the, the entire community and the local residents were very happy to have. But it took a partnership with the residents and the city, and they were willing to, in that community, listen, and, and we are as well. I, I really would- I really would like to see what, we already have a pretty good handle on what the original project impacts and costs are going to be right now. I'd like to see if we could find some of the alternative recommendations and conversations that we've had and find out what the differences would be, what the timeline differences would be. I am concerned with the public safety aspect of it, as well as the ongoing costs to the budget. But at the same time, like Councilmember Mendoza said, this is a resource for our community. This is an opportunity, I think, that we could really use as a focus point to bring different cultural things together. We have so many wonderful different cultures here that are so talented. Also, the special needs components for events for our differently-abled community. And so they have an opportunity to bring these different communities from the outside of Brentwood and have a place that they could focus and help with the community there. So I really would love to get some information on, you know, what, if there could be different steps, the three instead of the two, the, what size we could do financially now? But as long as we have a viable plan moving into the future and we can balance the impacts versus the benefits, I think that that's something that I'd like to see more information on so that we can make a better decision, because this is going to be something that is or isn't here for a long time. So that would be really great, yes.
But can, are we still going to, are we doing the EIR in conjunction with this? Because we don't want to slow it down, right? Like, I think this, if we decide to go forward with this, this should be a priority project and like, let's move it fast and get it done and start reaping the benefits for the community. So is that something we can do at the same time?
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. The subsequent EIR process, that is pretty close to the finish line. We could move forward with completing that process. And, and yeah, with your direction, we could move forward with that. The other thing I'm hearing is to look at what we're able to, if we're able to downsize the amphitheater project to fit the remaining budget. So that's my understanding as to what to come back with, with that. But the subsequent EIR process, I think we could, we could move that forward independent from anything we decide afterwards. Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but whatever project we come up, oh, go ahead. Your light's green.
Well, I don't want to interrupt you.
What I was anticipating, if we stay within the amphitheater, whatever we ultimately come up with for the remaining funds to build, as long as it fits under that, what was analyzed inside the subsequent EIR for the 750, or for the, for the project as a whole, I think we should be okay. Katie, feel free to let me know.
So a couple of things. The subsequent EIR is moving along, but it needs a stable project description to base the analysis off of, of course. So one option would be to continue down the path that we're on right now and to fully study the existing project description that you have in front of you. And then, as Mr. Windsor noted, the project or the EIR will also include alternatives that will be studied. So if you all come up with a different alternative that you would like to see as well, that could be potentially added as a project alternative. But Alan and I should have a chance to talk offline about how to best manage the timing of that so that you're getting your money's worth in evaluating what you actually want the project to be. Because if you want it to be something different than what's currently evaluated, then maybe now is a good time to tweak that, to actually reflect the direction you're going to provide to staff. So it would be something we would have to have a further conversation, but I think we clearly hear that you would want to continue that work as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I agree with that. And do I have a motion? Is there a way for us to frame the motion that can accommodate everything that Katie just said?
I have been taking notes, so correct me if I'm wrong. If I missed something, please add it on. And I just want to say this, that I agree. I'd love to see this keep going, because if this started 20 years ago, you guys started this when I was one. And I also want to add that if I hit the lottery, if I hit the Powerball, I will pay for the amphitheater. You have that recorded somewhere. You have an attorney here, so it's on record, right? All right. That being said, I would like to make a motion to direct staff time and attention to, one, continue to complete the subsequent EIR process that's under the current project that we have. Second, to look into what we can do possibly if we size down, size it down, what would have to be removed, what that would look like, and look at the potential revenues that would come out of it. Look at this in a possible three-phase process instead of a two-phase process, to look at possible grant options and partnerships. And I feel like I'm missing one that you said. No? Am I hitting him off, everybody? Okay. I counted four or five things. That's it. That's everything. So that's my motion.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Could I ask a quick?
I'm sorry, yes.
Forgive me. I'm so sorry. So as I understand it, you want the subsequent EIR process to continue. As currently framed, that project does already have a few alternatives that had been included for study. And so that's what would go out and hit the streets for public review. If instead the council wanted to wait until you had given some further direction on what might be considered as alternatives instead, then those could potentially be baked into that same document so that the public would have the benefit of seeing the analysis of both this version of the project and whatever you give staff direction to move forward on. I'm just wanting to make sure we understand your timing request here.
I guess to understand it, do you know when this would come back? How much time staff would need to bring this back to us?
Possibly within a month, six weeks? That should be okay.
Okay. Does the council, is that okay to amend that, to have the EIR include the alternatives?
Yeah. And all of the mitigation that was talked about with security and the sideshow potential and all the rest of it, but I.
Public safety concern?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to just double-check the wording that you said about with the current budget, what the project would look like, and also what the projected operational cost yearly. And, okay, just want to make sure everything was connected there. Thank you.
So if we're talking about pushing, I'm sorry.
No, just to follow on Vice Mayor Meyer's comment regarding the budget. So the CEQA consultant has been retained with the scope of work that they've followed through on. If you wanted to now add different alternatives in that may require an adjustment to the budget for that particular piece of work associated with this, I just didn't want that to be a surprise.
So how much of it would currently affect public safety or relate to it at all?
I'm saying if you wanted the alternatives in this document to include any new iteration of the project, you may all move forward with, not public safety itself, yeah.
Got it. Okay. Okay, I'm good.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm just confused. The motion is to move forward with the 350-seat, 750-seat doing an EIR? Are we waiting on all of this, or I'm confused?
So, so that it's moving forward with the EIR with the current state and also the alternative suggestions? The different presentations of alternatives that will be presented back to us in a month?
So the current study is the 1,000-seat amphitheater? 750, my bad. And that's, that's what we're, the motion is. Yes?
Yes, and, and plus with the iterations that they're going to come back with. Yeah, absolutely.
And does this motion include the recommendation or suggestion from Katie to also be able to include the public input, once they've looked at that, so that?
And just so we're all clear, as a matter of timing, Alan and Bruce may be able to come back to in a month to six weeks with further information on your alternatives. But then, once you provide direction on those alternatives, that's when we would ask the CEQA consultant to review it, right? So the whole EIR won't be ready in four to six weeks, but that's when they'll be able to get started on their additional scope of work, if that's what we're working out at that point.
That would be my motion, yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
And my second stands.
Thank you. So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. At this time, we will move into public comments on item E1 only. Margaret?
At this time, public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on closed-session agenda items. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment in the chambers, followed by those, followed by those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And I have no speaker cards, and I see no hands raised.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comments. I do want to thank our residents for coming and giving us your input. We can't do our job without you, so thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to recess to close session?
I make a motion to adjourn to, I mean, recess to close session.
I'll second that.
Have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in recess.
Good evening, everyone. We are now reconvened and back in open session from closed session, and there is nothing to report out on closed session. At this time, we do have a quorum. Could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Present.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. You could join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, being just.
At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to Margaret.
At the city council meeting of October 10th, the city council revised the procedures for general public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. At this time, the public president in the chambers is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar. Request for future agenda items, new request. Comments for the meetings detailed future agenda items or business items should be made when that item is called. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. The microphone will be muted when the timer expires. And I have three speaker cards in person. I'll start with Joanne Clement.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant, council members and staff. I'm here this evening to speak about the dissolution of the Brentwood Neighborhood Committee. BNC was created as a conduit between Brentwood residents and the city council. Over time, BNC evolved into the city's event committee under the umbrella of Parks and Rec. I was a member of BNC for 12 years and the chair for the last three years that we were active. Our tree lighting grew from the small event at the front door of the senior center to the current location in the park. And now it includes dance groups, school choirs, visits with Santa, free cookies and hot chocolate. In December of 2019, we stood on the stage after the tree was lit, the snow was falling, the park was full of families, and it was really magical. We also participated in Hometown Halloween and gave away lots of candy. We sponsored National Night Out with our PD and Neighborhood Watch and Home of the Season for Halloween and Christmas with Parks and Rec. With our previous city manager, Gus Vina, we started the Fourth of July Parade. We also created Bark in the Park, our city dog parade, with the help of our veterans, our fire department, county animal control, our local vendors, rescue groups, and the special things to our PD and their canines. I was so disappointed and sad last year when resurrecting BNC didn't work out, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to have served the city. I loved every minute. Thank you.
The next speaker is Owen.
Hey, good evening, council. It's good to see all of you. I'm Owen Spishak again, chairperson of the Youth Commission and Brentwood PAL board member. Just coming to give a few updates about youth in our community. First, starting off, I participated in the Contra Costa Youth Voices Listening Session. That was mostly to direct where Measure X funds are going, to provide a youth center in the county. East County was selected as one of the locations for the youth center, so I was in that, trying to promote Brentwood as being a good spot for a youth center. We were talking about mostly like programs they wanted to offer, what age ranges and who they wanted to serve. And I'm also part of the steering committee for that, too, so taking all of that information that is gathered from the surveys and listening sessions, and then partnering with other people from the county, and then seeing what services we want to offer and who we want to provide these to. And then again, pushing for Brentwood as to be one of those places for a youth center. For Brentwood PAL, too, give a quick little update. Our crab feed's coming up February 23rd at the community center, so you can find more information about that in our Super Bowl barbecue on our social medias, Instagram and Facebook. The Youth Commission, we're planning our Work Experience Fair that's coming up, I think, next month. That will be in the community center. More information to come on that. Providing scholarships, too. We're working on doing those and getting those out to youth in the community as soon as possible, as well as planning our multicultural fair, which we hosted last year. That's going to be in April. More information and flyers will come on that. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
The next speaker is Colin.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Brentwood City Council, distinguished guests and fellow citizens. I'm Colin Brown, a government relations associate with GovGPT. It's an honor to be here today to introduce you to GovGPT. It's an AI startup based in Mountain View, California. GovGPT is dedicated to revolutionizing city governance through the power of generative artificial intelligence. Our mission is centered around enhancing democratic processes, making them more efficient and attuned to the voices of the community. We offer a range of innovative solutions designed to optimize various aspects of citizen engagement and city administration. Our products include advanced tools for analyzing public sentiment, facilitating more informed decision-making, and enhancing communication between city officials and residents. These solutions are crafted to adapt to the unique needs of each city, ensuring that every citizen's voice is not just heard, but also valued. Our technology is about bridging the gap between local government and the community, fostering a more connected and responsive governance model. I look forward to discussing how GovGPT can specifically benefit Brentwood in more detail following this meeting. I'll be reaching out to potentially schedule individual demos if you're interested and answer any questions you may have. Thank you for this opportunity to prevent GovGPT, and thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Danny.
Good evening. Quick point. One, Costco. As many here may not know, Costco's being sued again by Sino. Nothing unusual. However, I ask if the city has considered an amicus brief. Basically, it's a friend of the court to support Costco against Sino. I ask once again that the council reconsider allowing people who wish to speak openly to do so via Zoom. The last meeting was telling the last couple. There were many people who had an opinion regarding certain things. It's safe to say that people, more people would have said something but were afraid to come in and be seen voicing their point of view. And the recent tragedy of the shootout this week will spark people to speak. Unfortunately, unlike the similar tragedy last year in a quiet neighborhood where people were able to voice their concerns on Zoom. This time around, folks, as of right now, won't have that luxury to voice their concerns. Regarding the meeting tomorrow, regarding how the police deal with our homeless. I know I'm not going to win any friends with this, but I can only say that until our country, our state, our county, but most importantly, here, accepts certain facts. Homelessness is a concept that will never be solved inasmuch as terrorism or child abuse or drug abuse are concepts that will never be solved. There is a difference between homelessness and homeless. With homeless being a specific number, and in our case, between 89 and 200 people. And if we address our specific homeless instead of trying to address everybody else's challenges, we can make an impact. I've elaborated on this on Facebook and Nextdoor. I have a unique perspective, being I have dealt with all three. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments, move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaison and staff. And I will start to my left, Councilman Orlemans.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight. So this is since, not the last meeting, the meeting before, so I'm going to just run through it really quickly. I attended the Planning Commission interviews. Congratulations to Anita Roberts and Gerald Johnson that were elected to the Planning Commission. They've already been sworn back in or sworn in. Attended the Chamber of Commerce mixer up at the Shadow Lakes Golf Club. Ice skating with the Police Activities League here at Brentwood on Ice. Really cool event, a lot of kids, great event. Coco with a cop at Chilin Tea, at Chil Tea and Coffee, and they brought in the Grinch and the really nice big, brand-new rescue vehicle. Great event, lot of pictures, lot of kids, great event for the families to get to. The swearing-in of the five new Brentwood officers, one of them's a lateral over from another agency, and four are new recruits who graduated the academy. I attended the PAL board meeting. Owen already pointed out the upcoming events. Missed the barbecue competition on Super Bowl Sunday at Bolero. You can go on the PAL website and get any of that information. Watched the Planning Commission meeting just the other night, and PAL bowling at the bowling alley. And then the open house with Supervisor Burgess last night at her office. And that pretty much wraps it up. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Since we last discussed this, attended the downtown Brentwood Coalition mixer. The California Alliance of Local Electeds, a presentation by Assemblymember Christopher Ward. The Heal Theory event. It's a nonprofit group created by some local students that were working through AmeriCorps to recognize the National Day of Service, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and they did a project of supply packets and blankets for local unhoused students. The CalCity Speaker Series introduction to incoming President Dan Parra. The CalCity's mayors and councilmember run-of-show for the conference this week, the Planning Commission meeting, the Brentwood Leadership Roundtable planning meeting for Brentwood's first-ever Community Day of Service on April 27th. A lot more information coming there, opportunities for nonprofits, and also opportunities for volunteers who want to support them on a short-term basis. Listen to a presentation by Colin Coffey from the East Bay Regional Park District about their 90th anniversary. And another California Alliance of Local Electeds meeting, a presentation by Senator Angelique Ashby, and these were focused on the need for affordable housing. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Hello. Since the last previous time, watched a NEM3 Center of Biodiversity versus the CPUC, which is important to all of us because of our PG&E bills. CalCity's Policy Committee orientation volunteered with Icas del Campo at a giveaway. Our Neighborhood Voices meeting, we're still continuing to try to take back local control, which we talk about a lot on this council. A Cali meeting with Assemblymember Ward, who is now the new Housing Committee lead, which is a little scary. Attended the delivery of refrigerator and freezer for Icas del Campo donated by the Lions of Brentwood, Discovery Bay and International. CalCity's call with the new incoming President Dan Parra. Sat in for the mayor at the Contra Costa County Mayor's Conference, watched the Planning Commission meeting, the League Latino Caucus Public Relations and Strategic Plan meeting. We had our first Housing Committee meeting for the Latino, for the league, sorry, there's so many leagues. And then Cali meeting with Senator Ashby and this latest Planning Commission meeting as well.
Sorry, I keep jumping the gun on our mayor here. So, go back, back in time. I'll do these out of order, but good afternoon, everyone. I want to start off first by thanking Joanne for all her service on the BNC. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our city. One, I attended the MLK Day of Service and did an art project, an art mural at an elementary school in Antioch where other local officials were present and painting. Watched the BUSD School Board meeting, where I was honored as a member of the DEI Committee in my individual capacity, but I want to brag. Watched the 2024 Policy Committee meeting orientation of the League of California Cities as one of the new members of the Policy Committee. Attended the Community Service Policy Committee meeting, where there was a discussion on general briefing, discussing the existing policies and guiding principles, update on our master plan for aging and aging resources, which was presented by none other, very eloquently and fabulously by our Vice Mayor, Susanna, and worked on the adoption of the 2024 Work Program. I attended, watched the, sorry, watched the Planning Commission meeting, attended the CalCity's Black Women, I'm sorry, California Black Women Collective meeting, where Honorable Tina McConner of the 61st Assembly District spoke, as well as Joy Langford of Community Outreach League of Acres of Public Partnership. She talked about sustainable, clean hydrogen hubs in California, which was really cool because there's a lot of money for that. So I'd like to find out more from her. Also, attended the Contra Costa County Bar Association Installation Luncheon. One, I was being sworn in as the income and treasurer, but, which was cool in my city council capacity, we got to honor the Port Chicago 50 family members. So a lot of the family flew in from the East Coast, and one of the things, a woman walked up to me and said, "My hero, you got the city of Brentwood to work with us to do a resolution." So they were very thankful for our recognition of the Port Chicago 50, and they wanted me to let the entire council, as well as the city, know that they're very thankful. And then the last thing that I did, which was really cool, was I got to go, I used to own a bridal shop, so I donated 100 So I donated a hundred tuxedos and fifty dresses to the All Abilities Prom that will be happening right here in our city. And it was heartwarming to see all the tuxedos go out and know that some lovely kids will be wearing those. And thanks.
Thank you. I also would like to thank our lovely Brentwood area Neighborhood Committee Bank representative. She has done such outstanding work over the years. And a lot of that work will continue to go on in all of these different events. And so we really appreciate all of your work. Thank you so much. And thank your husband, who has loaned you to us for all these many years. I also attended the Planning Commission swearing-in where I had the opportunity to swear in a new Planning Commissioner and a current sitting one. I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Day of Work and Service. Had the opportunity to sit with several representatives that had flown in from Howard University in Washington, D.C. And Doctors Langston, who are both representatives of the university. And actually walked with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the sixties. It was really a very humbling and incredible experience to be with individuals that are continuing to have such an impact in our world and our lives personally. I also attended the Transplant Equifa Bart State Route Four meetings. The swearing-in of our new five police officers. Had some meetings with representatives from the Green Empowerment Zone, which is a new zone in East Bay where the government has given over three-hundred million dollars in funding to have local communities try to attract manufacturing and tech businesses, high-paying jobs in local areas, which is exactly what we're working to do here. And we're working to have them come out and see if the city of Brentwood can find a place in their plans to bring these very high-paying jobs into our community as well. And I've met with several residents concerning their, regarding their concerns on homelessness as well as the encroachment of violence from our surrounding areas. Our police department has done an outstanding job in being proactive. And I want to make sure, and I've let them know, and I'll let you know, I want to make sure that as a representative of our community, that we stay ahead of this flood. We want to make sure that Brentwood stays Brentwood. And so I'm thankful for the work that our police department is doing. And with that, I have nothing further to report at this time. So at this time, we'll move into consent calendars. I would like to remove item E-five. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to adopt consent calendar less item E-five.
A second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll move to item E-five. Yes.
Forgive me, there's an ordinance title that I believe needs to be read.
I'm sorry, Margaret. Yes. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood adopting a zoning text amendment, RZ-23-001, to amend Chapter seventeen-point-four-nine-five, PD forty-five.
So at this time, I want to pull item E-five. And it is regarding the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Brentwood and Liberty Union High School District regarding the Public Art Design Academy, or PATA. I understand that we have some representatives from PATA here. At a project cost of twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. And at this time, I'm going to ask the representatives of PATA if they would like to come and speak and talk to us about this project.
Thank you, Mayor. TANU and Recreation Manager. Before the students speak, I'll just do a quick introduction if I can for their project tonight. So again, TANU and Recreation Manager, tonight, we're very excited to bring forth Liberty High School's Public Art Design Academy, PATA. Students present their twenty-three-twenty-four project for city council's consideration. If approved by city council, the funding for this project would come from the Public Art Acquisition Fund. Prior to tonight, PATA students presented three project concepts to the Arts Commission on December thirteenth. Following discussion at the meeting, the Arts Commission selected one concept to be recommended for city council's consideration. PATA is led by Mr. Jake Edwards, who has worked closely with city staff to prepare concepts and presentations for tonight. With that, I will hand it off, hand off our presentation to PATA students George, Raphael, and Diego. And we'll pull up their presentation on the screen.
Good evening, esteemed mayor and city council. I'm George, and I'll be starting us off tonight. Our goal this year was to represent the Chinook salmon that used to migrate up Sand Creek. We're going to do this through a metalwork sculpture that incorporates mosaic tile. Here's some previous works that our class academy have done. An example would be the PATA twenty-sixteen class doing the baseball sculpture at Sunset Park. On the right, there's some examples of Mr. Edward, our PATA Coordinator. Some of his works with metal sculpting and metal sculptors. This should be incorporating some of the techniques and styles he's done into the fish of our current sculpture. Here's some other works that previous PATA classes have done, such as the mural using mosaic tile on Second Street and the mural on the community center and also the painting in the parking garage. The location we chose for the sculpture this year was the intersection between Sand Creek and O'Hara Land. We chose this because the name of the street is the same as the creek that the Chinook salmon used to migrate up. And also is a very high-traffic area, allowing for many citizens and passersby to see the sculpture. Here's our workplace. It is a planter box on the corner of the sculpture, of the intersection. We're going to be placing the sculpture around the middle of the workspace because we want to leave room for future PATA projects to expand the planter box. We're going to re-landscape it to make it look even better than it was before. Here's some additional views of the planter box because we want to show how it's going to look as a passerby, driver, or citizen. But another thing is that our sculpture will not be frontal piece. We want to have a good view, a different feeling from just looking, moving from a different direction, seeing it from a different direction. And now for the actual concept, I'm going to pass it over to my fellow PATA peer, Raphael.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Raphael, and I am the designer of the tri-fish. And as you can see, you can see the digital art in front of you. It's going to be a red Chinook salmon that are going to be made out of sheet metal. As well to that, I have the little seaweed there that is also going to be made out of metal, holding it up so it's a bit more natural. And the fish are all facing sort of different directions so that no matter where you're at, you're able to see a fish. And then at the base, you may see a little fish and a little wave. Those are going to be mosaic tiling done by PATA students who have worked with tiling the entirety of PATA. I hope that it would be a fun way to incorporate everyone because I know everyone is not good at welding. Here are a couple of different views, angles, and the dimensions of it. So from the back, it's going to be three feet tall, and in the front, it's going to be two feet tall. There's a slight difference so that rain can pour off of it during the rainy seasons. But in accordance with that, there is going to be a slight slant, and we estimate that's going to be about eighty-nine-point-five degrees. The surface of it is going to be sixty-eight by sixty-eight inches. And the fish is in length is going to be sixty-eight inches, ten and a quarter inches width, and twenty-eight inches in height. And the fish are going to get progressively bigger. So Fish Two is going to be seventy-two inches in length, and Fish Three is going to be seventy-four inches in length, with no change to the width or height. As you can see, here are a couple of the inspirations. A couple of these might look weird. That is because they are thumbnails to videos. I watch videos of live salmon so that I can make it look lively, and they didn't look still, stale, like just another monument that you'll see. I wanted to bring the Chinook salmon back to life in Brentwood. You may also see a weird-looking koi fish that is something that I used to help me with the design process. And if you look to the right, you will be able to see it, how I used it, so that I can get the different angles, different views when I was working on it initially. And here's how we would expect it to look like in the workspace from a car's perspective and pedestrians. Next, I would like to pass off the process of building the fish to my friend and fellow PATA classmate, Diego Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Diego Lopez, and I will talk more on the process of building the actual fish and also the base that the fish will stand, be on. First, we laid out a six-foot piece of butcher paper to just draw an initial outline of the fish. Then we started cutting the rebar into small pieces and bending it so we could weld it all together to get that outline. Then we added more pieces of rebar on the side to get more of a 3D shape. And then we also gave it a slight curve on the front and the tail side so it looks more alive and not just stagnant. We also started cutting up pieces of sheet metal and putting it onto the fish with a boater's epoxy, and also gives it a nice texture to the fish. The base will be made from a rebar welded together, and it's six by six in a grid pattern. And it's going to be three, three inches thick. And this is the, one of the mosaics that you will see on the front, which is the fish. And the other one will be the wave design of the mosaic.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for listening to our presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I see you.
Super excited to see this. This is, we say this every time this comes forward to us, that this is one of our favorite things we get to discuss every single year. So, thank you. Fantastic presentation. I love the group. You know, the presence of everybody supporting each other. That fish looks amazing. Would like to hang it on my wall, and I don't even do fish. I mean, I eat them, but I don't decorate with them. But I'm wondering, for example, like, security-wise. So these are, this is going to be a beautiful piece of art. And I'm curious about vandalism, like, what kind of protections are in place? Or what could you do if somebody's, you know, spray-painted on it or something? What would that look like?
So there's going to be an anti-graffiti coating added to the sculpture. And as well, PATA will be coming back every once in a while. As we stated earlier, we are going to continue work on the planter box. So future, if there's anything major, like damages or whatever, future PATA classes will be there to fix it.
Great. What is the timeline for this?
The timeline is two months to have it completed.
And how many, and when does it launch, actually?
It will launch as soon as approved.
Wonderful. Okay. And then how many students in total do you think will be touching this project by the, by the end of it?
Every single one will have their mark on it.
Fantastic. And what kind of number does that look like?
I'd say about, like, thirty-two.
That's, that's fantastic. I'm.
Twenty-six.
That number keeps changing, but.
I said about thirty.
This is great. Thank you so much for the presentation. You guys did a very professional job, and I'm super excited about it. Thank you.
Do we, comments or just questions?
What, either one? That's.
I love that. I mean, it is my favorite meeting. We have a lot of hard meetings. I love it when you guys show up, so thank you. And I think it's great because one of my favorite ones is your fish tunnel. So I love that you're doing some fish again, but it's beautiful, and I can't wait to see it. All of your projects are amazing. I love walking out of the community center and seeing your project right in front. So it's nice that when we're driving down the street, we'll see this one. So thank you. It's beautiful.
It is absolutely gorgeous, and I just wanted to say to George, Raphael, and Izzy Eagle. Diego, thank you so much. I want to say you all have done such a great presentation. The lady in the back corner next to the police officer is HR. You should apply for a job here because you gave an amazing staff report, like, amazing, right? But it's so beautiful. Thank you so much. It's so gorgeous. And I don't eat fish either or do fish, and I would want one at my house as well. So thank you.
You guys did a phenomenal job. We truly appreciate everything that PATA has always brought before us. Always been beautiful. Can't wait to see the new project take shape and be built and put up. Thank you for all your hard work, and it's really great that we have a group of adults and a school that helps support all of that and helps you guys to move forward. So thank you very much.
I second everything that they have said. Could we have everyone involved with this project, if you could stand right now so that we can thank you? Yes, if you could bring that up, and so maybe our IT staff could get a picture, if you could stand there. Oh, wow. And who made this? Who made this one? Phenomenal. That's just terrific. Wow, that is fantastic. Yes. Well done. Thank you so much.
If I could actually get you guys to all stand right in front of this man here and facing that way so that the public can actually see it on the cameras. I'll put it on the monitor so you'll understand where I'm asking you to stand.
Let Darren pose. He was basically it. Say hi, Darren. Any of the models should be toward the front so they can be seen, like the little model as well.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. So at this time, I will move approval on item E-five.
Motion to approve item E-five.
A second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you so much. You're approved. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Item F1. This item is related to the Lone Tree Way Residential Project Associate Planner Miguel Contreras will present. Miguel?
Actually, Mayor, if I can step in one moment.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. So as you know, this item that you're scheduled to consider tonight is a proposed residential development on Lone Tree Way. The Planning Commission previously reviewed the project and recommended that the council approve a modified version of it. This afternoon, the applicant for the project, Jackie Sino, sent you and staff a letter proposing a further revised version of the project. A good deal of information about this further revision has not yet been submitted and multiple city departments will need to review this proposed revision in order to supply you with updated analysis and recommendations. For that reason, we would respectfully request that this item be continued until February 27th to allow staff the opportunity to review it fully. With the applicant's assistance, we believe this date is feasible and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Oh, no, I was going to make a motion to continue.
Oh, okay. There are no questions. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to, oh, go ahead. Oh, public comment.
I'm sorry, yes.
Just on the continuance itself.
At this time, we will open public comment on the continuance only. Thank you. Margaret?
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the City Council on the continuance related to this item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your, raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment from those in the chambers first and those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes and your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We did receive one written letter from the applicant and that has been posted on the City Council Meetings page. And I have no speaker cards and no hands raised in Zoom.
At this time, we'll close public comments. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the item until February 27th, I believe you said.
I second that motion.
We have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. The item F2. This item is related to the High Diversion Organics Project. Public Works Director Casey Wicker will present. Casey?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the result of your direction at the last council meeting for staff to bring back a contract to design and build a high diversion organics operating facility for your consideration. Much like the technical nature of the project, this contract is also relatively complex and different from our normal public works contracts, so I wanted to highlight a couple of items for your consideration. This is a design-build contract, meaning the same contractor will be responsible for the design and construction. Typically, we hire an engineering firm to design the project and solicit a different contractor to perform the actual construction. But in this case, having the design and the construction under the responsibility of one contractor allows us to meet the strict timelines needed to receive the 30% investment tax credit. Also different is this contract is set up in two phases. What you are considering tonight is the first phase, which covers the detailed design of the facility and allows us to determine a guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the facility. When we have that guaranteed maximum price, we'll come back to you for phase two of this contract, which will be an amendment to this agreement. And it will include the pricing and the construction timelining, other details. We are estimating six to eight months to complete this first phase work and bring the proposed amendment back for your consideration. And at that time, we'll also have additional bond financing information, updated costs for the CIP project. And we'll also, at some point, have to bring back agreements for SEQA environmental work for your consideration and some construction management assistance. And with that, I've got the consultants available and our legal team available. If there's any other questions, we'll be happy to take those.
Clarifying questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will open public comments. Margaret?
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in the chambers, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the chambers first and those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We received no written public comments on this item. And I have no speaker cards and there are no hands, double check, scroll, scroll, scroll. There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Right, this time we will close public comments. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry. You have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Yeah, to be honest, I kind of missed the deadline and had questions and didn't move forward quickly enough. But I have a couple of questions related to the fiscal model projections. The first one is on page 304 of the agenda packet. And there's a, part of the staff report says, is projecting increased sales tax revenues from a significant new development beginning in 2025, 26. And I was, did I have that in the wrong? It's in the wrong section. No wonder I didn't raise my hand. I knew what I was doing. Okay, sorry, I'll save that one till next time you can get your answer ready. Thank you.
I, I really just think that this is an opportunity that is, has such potential to have a positive impact on, on the operations of this, this city. I'm really excited for the opportunity to investigate what this means. So with that, do I have a motion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution. One, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with WM Lyles to design and construct the High Diversion Organics Operating Facility. And two, amend the CIP. And three, amend the fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating budget.
And a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the second motion? I'm, okay, I guess that is same, same issue. I'm already moved going to the G2. Okay, so all in favor? Aye, we got it. We'll move into item G1. Yes, this this holiday has thrown off our progress here. Business items, item G1. This item is related to mid-year operating budget amendments and Assistant Finance Director Christine Andrews. Hi Christine, will present.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. The city adopts a two-year budget and we are rapidly approaching the end of the second budget year. Tonight, I will be presenting the 2324 general fund projection and proposed mid-year budget amendments. An update to the 10-year general fund fiscal model. Followed by a review of proposed amendments for enterprise and other funds. Wrapping up the discussion with budget watch items and next steps in the budget process. With City Council instruction, after the budget presentation is concluded, Finance Director Carrie Breen is prepared to give an overview of the longer-term general fund revenue options. Details about each of these options is included as Exhibit B in tonight's staff report. I will start with the general fund, which provides funding for many services to the public, including police, street maintenance and parks, and is the primary source of discretionary funding for the City Council. At the midterm budget review in June, the projected two-year budget surplus was estimated to be about $400,000, which reflects a break-even result from ongoing operations. Since that time, the 2223 fiscal years come to a close and the actual surplus produced for the year was $1 million, after ensuring that the general fund 30% reserve requirement was met. Per City Council policy, half of the surplus was used to pay down unfunded pension obligations and half was transferred to the Budget Stabilization Fund. We have now completed our mid-year budget review and conservatively project a $500,000 surplus for fiscal year 2324. This $500,000 projected surplus includes all of the budget amendments detailed in tonight's staff report. However, current predictions about the falling interest rate environment indicate that there could be gains on the city's investment portfolio from the year-end fair market value adjustment that would have a positive impact on the projected surplus. So to be conservative, we have not included these potential gains in the current projection. Next, I will go over the proposed 2324 revenue and expenditure budget amendments and budget savings that are included in the projection. Starting with general fund revenues, a budget amendment to reduce net revenues by about $1.3 million or 1.8% is being proposed. Property tax is expected to increase by about $600,000 due to properties turning over and being reassessed at higher values. The largest reduction in revenue is driven mainly by a decrease in the expected development through the end of the year, resulting in a reduction of about $1 million. The decrease is because of changes in the timing of commercial development activity from this fiscal year to next and a reduction in other permitting such as solar. Surplus property sale revenue is expected to decrease $400,000 from the extinction in the timeline for the sale of these properties. A reduction in sales tax revenue of about $300,000 is proposed to align with projections from the city's sales tax consultants. And finally, other revenues are expected to decrease about $200,000. Included in the proposed general fund budget amendments is a net decrease in expenditures of about $1 million or 1.3%. This decrease is essentially due to one-time $1.1 million decrease in the CalPERS required annual payment on unfunded pension obligations. This reduction was the result of favorable CalPERS investment returns in 2021, along with additional discretionary payments to further pay down the liability made by the city in prior years. However, due to negative investment returns in 2122, this required annual payment will return to higher levels starting next year. In addition to the reduction in budget expenditures, the projection includes higher-than-expected personnel vacancy savings as compared to the midterm projection, resulting in an additional expected savings of about $2 million for 2324. Once all the budget amendments and the budget savings were incorporated into the projection, again, a surplus of $500,000 is now expected for 2324. Staff is making a recommendation tonight to establish a $1.1 million reserve for future general plan update. Establishing this reserve from the one-time savings and personnel costs in 2324 would result in an updated projection of a $600,000 deficit. This projected deficit does not include the potential impact of year-end investment gains and it is probable that the general fund will be closer to a break-even result after the $1.1 million reservation. If an actual deficit were to occur, it would be offset by a transfer from the Budget Stabilization Fund, which has been established for this purpose. From a budget perspective, it is much easier to fund the project when we have a projected surplus than to try to come up with the funds later when times may not be as good. If approved, this recommendation will provide a funding source for the proposed general plan update project. The project was originally anticipated to begin in the next three to five years. However, staff believes it would be prudent to begin the project in 2526 instead. Moving the timing up is primarily due to a number of recent changes in state law that, among other things, make it more advisable to have general plan policies that are more objective and precisely written than many of the current general plan policies. It would also provide the public with an opportunity to refine its long-term vision for the community, which is the basis of the general plan. Additionally, the general plan update project would be included in the draft capital improvement program, or CIP, to be presented to the City Council in a workshop in April. Now we will turn to an update of the 10-year general fund fiscal model that includes the impact of all of tonight's budget amendments and the proposed general plan reserve. The fiscal model takes the budget as a starting point and then using hundreds of variables and current economic data, forms a 10-year projection of general fund revenues, expenses and reserves. The city prepares the 10-year fiscal model to look at the long-term impacts of proposed budget changes and to ensure a sustainable financial future. The city's financial structure and commitments will change over time and we need to make sure we're prepared for those changes before they arrive. It is important to understand that the fiscal model provides an overview of the general financial direction the city is heading towards. The fiscal model can never give precise future results. It identifies longer-term trends and potential financial challenges so that course corrections can be made well in advance of potential financial problems becoming a reality. The fiscal model, like the operating budget, is also conservative by design. Our results are usually more positive than initial projections, giving us a margin of safety during more challenging economic times. When results have exceeded projections, funds have been utilized to pay down our unfunded obligations or contribute towards priority projects. The key factors included in the fiscal model are operating costs for the future Sand Creek Sports Complex and Vineyards Amphitheater, the impacts of absorbing affordable housing costs into the general fund when the affordable housing and lieu funds are exhausted, increased pension and retiree medical costs resulting from CalPERS investment losses in 2122 that are phased in over several years as required by CalPERS policy, increasing pavement management program funding needs, a slowing development with an average of just under 75 family and 120 multifamily permits per year, higher investment returns on the city's cash due to higher interest rates, and increased sales tax revenues in future fiscal years from new commercial development. This chart illustrates a summary of the annual results of the updated fiscal model and the balance of the general fund 30% reserve is shown in blue and the budget stabilization balance is in green. The budget stabilization fund plays a key role in balancing the city's long-term forecast. The fund was established from prior general fund savings with the plan that be drawn down over time, offsetting the rising pension and retiree medical costs. And you can see in the chart that the 30% reserve grows steadily over the 10-year period due to rising expenses, from about $23 million to about $31 million. The model projects that the budget stabilization balance will peak in 2526 and then be drawn down over the next seven years as annual expenses exceed revenues by approximately $1.7 million a year. And this drawdown is most significant during the time when CalPERS increases the city's contribution requirements through 2930 and then begins to decline over the final few years. At the end of the forecast, about $3 million would remain in the budget stabilization fund and our longer-term projections of 15 to 20 years indicate an improved financial position as the unfunded obligations and their associated costs are paid off. Now we will leave the general fund and discuss 2324 budget requests for enterprise and other funds. The city has three enterprise operations that provide solid waste, wastewater and water services. And the user fees that provide these, the revenue for these operations are set in accordance with Proposition 218. Rate studies are performed periodically to ensure the enterprise rates are sufficient to cover operating expenses, capital improvements, upgrades and costs associated with meeting both state and federal regulations. The user fee revenue can only be used for providing each specific service and for no other purpose. The City Council adopted new five-year rate studies in fiscal year 2223. Savings from a decrease in the CalPERS required annual payment on unfunded pension obligations also applied to all of the city's enterprise and other funds, resulting in a total savings of about $500,000. To bring budgeted revenues in line with rate study, an increase of $1.1 million in revenues is proposed for the solid waste enterprise fund and a decrease of $450,000 in revenues for the wastewater enterprise fund. Additionally, a revenue reduction of $700,000 is proposed for the water enterprise fund to reflect reduced consumption that occurred after the timeframe in which the rate study analysis was performed. These budget amendments have no impact on the rates for services to customers and they're proposed only to get, adjust the revenues to be in line with the rate studies already approved by City Council. Finally, as detailed in the staff report, there are budget amendments proposed to Finally, as detailed in the staff report, there are budget amendments proposed to other city funds with a net increase in expenditures of about $95,000 over seven funds. Before concluding, I would like to cover the economic and regulatory issues that may have an impact on our future budgets. And although inflationary pressures appear to be cooling slightly, the recent period of persistently high inflation has led to higher city operational and capital costs. And this upward pressure on costs could have a significant impact on the city's longer-term financial outlook, as the city has very little control over revenue increases. In addition, although the worst expectations about a recession in 2023 did not come about, the 2024 economic outlook is uncertain, and there is a good possibility of a general economic slowdown, as the higher cost of both governmental and personal borrowing may crowd out consumer spending, which is the primary driver of the U.S. economy. The cost to maintain the city's streets is increasing as the infrastructure ages and construction inflation has also increased. These factors may require a larger contribution to the program by the general fund to keep the streets at the current high-quality level. The state continues to pass regulatory requirements without accompanying necessary funding. Costs for compliance in the area of solid waste organics processing has already had impacts on the budget, but additional regulation like mandating electric vehicle fleets is among the many factors that could add significant infrastructure and ongoing costs to the city's operations. The state's boom and bust tax revenue cycle has produced a projected $68 billion-plus budget deficit for 2425, which may have consequences on local governments as the state looks to close the gap. While stock market returns have been impressive over this past year, CalPERS results are only on pace to meet their annual return target, meaning their costs will remain high. There is also a risk that CalPERS could once again miss their targeted rate of return by the end of the year and add additional pressure on future budgets. Finally, the city's contracts with labor groups expire in June of 2024, the outcome of which will impact future budgets. Next steps in the two-year budget process start with a strategic plan workshop next Monday at 5:30. This will be followed by a CIP workshop scheduled for April 9th, allowing for city council and public input on the program that will be incorporated into the operating budget draft. On May 28th, an operating budget workshop will be held for city council and public input on the draft two-year budget, and on this same night, the final CIP draft will be presented for city council approval at the regular meeting. Once changes from the operating budget workshop are incorporated into the budget draft, it will be presented for city council approval on June 25th. This concludes the operating budget portion of the presentation, and I'd like to pause and see if there's any questions, and also ask for council direction on the proposed $1.1 million reservation for the general plan update project.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we should push that out. I think, I mean, we just hear that everyone's so busy, and is adding this going to somehow negatively impact us? Because we hear there's no time. So do we want to push it out a little bit longer so that staff has time to catch up on everything else they need to do? Because we have some big stuff coming up.
You're referring to the general plan update?
Yeah.
Well, there will be, we hope, a couple of big projects ticked off our list this calendar year, so the housing element adoption will be done, but you know, we do have to implement those programs, but that will be a lesser effort than the drafting and the adoption. The focus zoning ordinance update should be done this calendar year, along with the objective design standards. So this calendar year, we should be ticking off some of those major time-intensive staff projects. There are many, many, many other things on our plate, and there always will be development projects, discrete ordinance updates, such as like the oil and gas, or there'll be constantly work that we have to do, and we will be constantly very, very busy. It's up to the council how they want to prioritize staff time and resources, so I think a general plan update, whether we start it now or two or three years from now, will always have to fit into whatever's on our plate at any given time. So some of the biggest projects will be ticked off our list this year, so that's fortunate timing from that perspective.
Okay, I just, that's always my concern, is that we hear like we're too, like, we don't have time, and things get pushed back, and you know, things take a long time, and I just want to make sure that we can tick and tie everything that we have going on and, you know, sometimes move a little bit faster, because just that's how I am, like, you know, just move around fast. My other question is, what if there's things that are missing? So for example, we're going to come back to LUD with the grants, but we also have to talk about the MOU with Downtown Brentwood Coalition. Is that something we ask you to put in now, or do we wait for LUD, or how does that happen?
So what we have right now is a projection through the end of this year. We've kind of given you that surplus through the end of this year. If we're talking about the two-year budget, right, you can make any budget changes this year if council directs, that can be in action. If we get input through a certain date, we can incorporate it into the two-year budget draft, but also at the budget workshop, that we're going to present to you where we're at on the budget, and if there are things that need to get added at that point, we can do that. The document is very large, it's a, you know, we started kicking this off in December. What we try to do is get you kind of a solid picture for the workshop in May, and if things are not in that draft that we need to put in, that's your time to tell us what to put in, okay? And we'll also be providing you with a, like a two-year projection with that budget draft as well. You give us input, we put that into the budget from that May workshop, and we incorporate it, and then we come back to you in June with the updated budget.
When is the MOU expired?
June 30th.
See, that's, I think that's where we're cutting it close, right? Because I don't want, my fear is that we're putting all of these events at risk if we don't do something, right? Like, if someone doesn't have a job, there's no one's going to do it.
Counselor Mendoza, we plan on bringing back the MOU to the city council prior to the end of this fiscal year, so sometime in April, May.
Yeah, but can we, can we hold money in the general fund right now for it to make sure that it's held for? Because I think that that's...
We can always incorporate draft amounts in the budget, and that can be worked out, you know, if LUD comes to that conclusion, you think that's going to be the city council direction, you know, we can incorporate anything into a draft, and then you guys can tell us, take it out, put more in. It's just there's a little bit of a timing, because we do have to publish something, you know, it gets a little tough to be incorporating changes like, you know, on May 1st if the workshop's on May 15.
That's why I want to come, and so, and to that point, and I think that's why we're going to have a budget subcommittee, like, we don't see all of the details of everything going on, so like, I know about this because they presented last time, and I'm like, wait, we're cutting it close for that renewal. And other cities have these budgets, so how do we look at line items and go, wait, this happened last year, it didn't happen this year, or this is happening this year, didn't hap... When can, I don't ever see that information, so hopefully we can do that, whoever's on the budget subcommittee, we can get into that detail and make sure we're not missing anything. Because right now, I would like to put a placeholder in for the seven, what was it, 70K a year, whatever it is, if that's, because I feel like we're cutting it close on that one.
And, and I just want to reassure you, reassure you two things, right? If it's not in the budget draft in May, we can put it into that draft, and it'll come back in June for actual adoption. Again, this is your budget, so if we do miss something in this two-year budget cycle, it's not like we closed the book on the two-year budget, right?
Yeah.
We do want to kind of know pretty much where we're at, right? But I just want to assure you that we can give you an update fiscally where are we at. You know, we do it every six months, we kind of give you kind of where we are, and it is up to you that even after we adopt the budget in June, we could literally take an item immediately after we adopt the two-year budget, and at your pleasure, do whatever it is you would like to see done with the budget.
Yeah, I just like the clearest picture possible, like, the earliest possible, so that's the only thing that I was concerned with last meeting, and that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Absolutely. And again, I wanted to say one more thing on that. In the budget process, especially at the workshop, we reassure you guys, anything that is in the budget is business as usual. If there's any new things, any new programs, any new people, any, anything new, we're going to bring that as a line item in my presentation, okay? So I call it, if it's business as usual, just a continuing thing that we haven't received feedback from council to stop, right? Anything, we're going to take a stop in my budget presentation, and we're very familiar with the budget. We go over in excruciating detail what you're talking about in our budget office, in meetings with each department, and we call out anything that needs your attention, your approval, your assent to do.
And I know we get the total department's budget, but I was wondering, is there any way to look at a total department's budget as a percent of residents or, you know, as like a population? And then also, can we look at all HR, like, what is total payroll for the city? What is total benefits for the city? What is total overtime for the city? Can we start looking at it in those kinds of buckets?
So there is, in the budget document, a very high-level, line-by-line, like, a line that says, here's salary and benefits for the entire organization.
For everything, okay, I didn't remember that thing.
And I can certainly, you know, show you that page, you know, send that to you later on to kind of see what, what you're looking for in terms of that. It's kind of an overview of the city.
Yeah, and then when you're budgeting, like, there's times you budget based on different levers, right? Like, it could be population, it could be houses. Is that something you can provide? Like, how did, how did, what metrics were used to budget those? Just so that we're understanding, like, was this expense because we grew in houses or because we grew in population or something, you know, just so, just because I'm nosy?
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that out of the ad hoc committee, that that, some of those questions can be answered. You know, it's difficult to put everything in one budget document, it's already 400 pages long, but we want to be transparent, and we want to provide the information that you, that you want to see, and if, if, as a council, you want to see more things in the operating budget, we're happy to take that input, if it would be helpful. It's just difficult to describe the whole process. I mean, there's, it depends on which expense and which revenue and which fund and what restrictions have. It's relatively complex, but I think that we can certainly provide the council or the ad hoc committee or whatever, whatever information that you, you would like to have, because we do a lot of detailed analysis.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Thank you very much, and thank you for always doing a good job.
Councilman Orland?
Just a couple of quick questions, and I don't know if this necessarily for finance, but if we're talking about setting money aside for a general plan update, how often is it usually done? How long, how often do we normally do?
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's not my area. Sorry about that. So that depends on the council's funding, so a benchmark of a good general plan is updated every 10 to 15 years, and it usually takes a couple of years to go through the update process.
Ours was last updated in?
2014.
And what do other cities do? Same process? Is that a normal practice for other cities and everybody?
Yeah, so it'll vary city to city, so best practice is 10 to 15 years. That's fairly common for cities with resources. Cities that might be resource constrained might do it every 15 to 20 years.
Okay, thanks. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So back to the fiscal model projections. There was something in the staff report on page 304 that was talking about increased sales tax revenues from significant new development beginning in 202526, and I was just curious what that refers to.
I think it refers to the development happening for Costco.
Okay, so that's projected to be potentially that far out.
So we're very conservative. So when we say that we're conservative, we are not counting our chickens before their hatches in this whole model, okay? And, and we want to give a buffer, right? A buffer for unexpected things. You know, I'm sure economic development will tell you it's going to open up in three months, because they're, they're that side of the coin, but finance, we're a little, we want to be conservative, and we want to under-provise and over-deliver on our financials.
So in a, in a projection like that, I mean, I realize that there wasn't an actual amount tied to it, but not being certain of anything, basically, at this point, as we, as we go through this interesting process that we're in, how does that get counted as a projection without having some sense of certainty around it?
Well, I mean, there's more certainty than there was when it was just an idea. So we don't incorporate it until we see some permits being pulled, we see some activity. Again, you know, it's very difficult to have your crystal ball on anything, right? And that's the reason why we're updating this constantly, okay? If we get information that something that we thought was going to happen is not going to happen, we're here every six months, we look at all of our assumptions every six months. Again, we're giving a conservative view, right? But we don't want to not put it in there, right? Because there is some likelihood that it could happen. But again, you know, next week could be a different story, right? And we're, we're doing kind of the best we can to balance what we know and what's reasonable to put in it, right? With also a conservative look, which is not putting it in for next year.
Okay, thank you for that. My second question on fiscal model projections was the, the staff report part that said personnel vacancy rates fall from 6% to 6%, I'm sorry, from the current 9%. And within the confines of this agenda item, trying to make sure we stay there, how do we project that fiscally?
So, so what we do is we look at, we have a, I think it's like a 14-year history of vacancies, you know, we're kind of up at the higher end of those vacancies. So we don't want to say, okay, this is our highest statistical number in that 14-year period, so we're going to keep rolling with 9%, because that would show way too much savings in the future. So it's a little art and science, we take a look at it, we say, what has been a more average year, right? And normally, you know, there can be vacancies between 4% and 6% are pretty normal, because you have people retiring, we have people, you know, taking other jobs, you, you just have a natural attrition, right? Right now, we're kind of high on that, on that kind of a one-time, you know, we've got a lot of vacancy savings one time. And so again, we want to be conservative, we don't want to roll that vacancy high point through the model, right? Because then that would show a couple million dollars extra savings for 10 years, which would say, oh, you guys have $20 million more to spend, right? We're not going to say that, right? We're going to go with something that eventually, I think the labor market will shake out, we're going to have, you know, maybe a slowdown, there might be a more normalcy to our vacancy rate coming up.
Okay, and I actually really, despite the fact that I have questions about it, completely appreciate the conservative model that you're using, so thank you.
Any further questions before we move forward to the next portion? Seeing none?
I, I just would like to come back to see if, if there was any direction on the reserve, thumbs up, thumbs down, or kick it down to, down the pike.
I, having chaired the previous effort, it was such a relief to not have to try to figure out where those funds were coming when we had to do it immediately, that having that in reserve for the future is something I think is, we need to do it as we can do it, and I think it'd be very foolish not to do it at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in, I'm so sorry. Of course, I want Christine's question to be answered, but in so much as you haven't heard public comment yet, I wouldn't want the council to find themselves in a position where they'd made a determination as to this direction before you hear from the public. So I don't know if you want to hear public comment on this section of it, and then go back, or, or how you'd like to break it up, but I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. I'd like for Christine to finish the presentation and, or whatever else we have.
The, at that point, I was just basically going to say that included in your staff report this evening is a chart with details on longer-term general fund revenue options, and Carrie is prepared to give an overview of these options, but I'd like to get your direction on your preference to either kind of wrap up the presentation tonight at this point, or if you would prefer have Carrie present the information on the options included in the staff report.
Okay, what is the pleasure of council?
I don't want to charge residents any more taxes at all. So I mean, I'm not, that, you're asking about the taxes?
Yeah, Exhibit B, which has sales tax measures, utility user tax, parcel tax, et cetera.
No, I think that if we do any of that, I mean, it's, huh? Are we going to, but I think she asked if...
I'm just asking if you want Carrie to present more detail, or if the detail in the staff report was sufficient.
Okay, we can hear more.
Okay, so that's it then, that would be it. Thank you.
Carrie.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. So included in the staff report is a summary outlining various methods by which general fund revenues could be increased. Additional revenue could be used for a variety of public purposes, including adding services and programs and expanding or constructing community facilities. Additional revenues would also ensure that we are able to maintain high-quality roads, public safety services, and parks. Not included in this presentation are practices we are already doing, such as regular for... Not included in this presentation are practices we are already doing, such as regular fee studies to ensure cost recovery. Also not included are concepts that would require involving other agencies, such as providing dispatch services to another city. Also, there's no staff recommendation for action tonight. This is presented as an informational report. So as we get started, I want to give you an idea of the sense of scale here. The general fund has an annual budget of about $70 million. Most of the options in the report would generate an increase of between 5 and 10% of the budget. So I'll start with sales tax, the first item there. It is by far the most common and successful method of increasing revenues. 14 of the 18 other cities in Contra Costa County do have sales tax increases, with one cent being the most common. The revenue potential associated with that would depend on the proposed rate, of course, with half cent generating about $5 million per year and one cent generating about $10 million per year. This would require ballot measure, which typically needs 50% approval. And sales tax measures statewide are generally successful, about 75% of the time, they are by far the, the option that is most used in California by California cities. The next two items up there, utility users' tax and parcel tax, also require voter approval, with the UUT needing 50% and the parcel tax needing 2/3. Parcel tax measures are not as common for cities as they are for schools, but are an option if desired. The city previously attempted a UUT measure several years ago, where the funds would have been dedicated to the former East Contra Costa Fire Protection District. That measure did not pass, but was also technically confusing with differing rates for different cities in the fire district. Each of these measures could be scaled to meet revenue needs, but would typically fall in the $3 to $5 million per year range. The next two items, TOT hotel tax and business license, so I included those in the chart for completeness, not as something that I would recommend to consider, just based off the relatively low amounts that we would generate from those options. So our TOT hotel tax rate is 10%. That's in line with most of the surrounding communities. And increasing it to say 12% would only generate about $150,000 per year. So it's a small amount that is a preferable one if it's a larger amount, because you're, you're typically getting the, the revenues from non-residents. You have people coming into the city for some reason, so that's why you want to look at something like that. But the dollars, we just don't have the volume to make it worthwhile at this point. And the business license tax, similar story. An increase there of about 20% would only net about $150,000. It's just not enough revenue to actually make such an undertaking worthwhile. So a general obligation bond is an interesting idea. We've used that before. The city did this to fund the police station, in fact, about 20 years ago. Voters have to approve the bond, and then it gets paid back through an assessment on property in the city. So it's based off the assessed valuation. So if you have higher value property, you pay a little bit more. We do bring to you every year the rate. So you, you probably noticed the geo-bond rate that we bring to council every year. That is for the bond that the police station was built using. This is a method by which, you know, a sum of money could be generated all at once, which could be raised quickly for a specific capital project or projects. But this would only be one-time funds, unlike these other, other options that I've presented so far. I have grants on the charts. Probably didn't need to include that. We do pursue grant opportunities, will continue to do so, but it is a potential source of revenues to help construct capital projects, as was discussed earlier in the workshop when we were talking about the amphitheater project. Energia, so we've talked recently about that project, the potential that there may be a surplus revenues coming from the project, from the sale of the natural gas, that could in part be used to support the general fund or to enhance services or construct facilities in the general fund. This is still several years away, and so this, the number here is, you know, this is, I wouldn't consider it a solid, you know, for sure number at this point. I think there's a lot of steps to get there, but there certainly is some potential to provide significant unrestricted revenues through that. Again, for completeness purposes, I put cannabis taxation on there. I'm not recommending that. I'm just, just giving you the options. Other cities have adopted these, and they've actually been really successful in terms of the, the ballot box. They're passing at 80, 85% rate. So the voters have approved them. It's up here in case you wanted to provide additional direction for us to investigate this. And then finally, the reserves, again, not recommended, but up there for completeness. We have a 30% reserve that Christine talked about earlier. If that were reduced to 20%, for example, that would yield about $7.5 million in one-time funds. But I would caution that that comes with several negative consequences. I can assure you, we would get downgraded by our rating agencies, and that would limit our ability to ever issue debt in the future, or at least raise our cost of doing so. We would still be able to do it, but they would, we'd just have to pay more to do so. It would also lessen our ability to respond to an emergency or a financial crisis. And then the last item, item up there, the revenue bond, that's really something, a method to turn a new revenue source into funds quicker. So let's just say, you know, there was a sales tax measure and it passed, and there was a list of projects that were desired, rather than waiting for the funds to come in for several years, could do a bond off that sales tax money, get all the funds upfront, and then pay the bond off with the sales tax as it comes in. So it's a way to just fast track things. You know, if the desire was there to do, you know, construct some facilities in a, in a faster timeframe than some of these options would provide. So that concludes my informational report. There's a chart in the staff report, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any follow-up or questions.
Okay, do you have any questions of Carrie at this time? No questions? Thank you. Christine?
It was just the direction on the reserve, but I think Katie recommended potentially doing.
Yes.
Public comment.
Thank you. At this time then, we will open public comment. Turn it to you, Margaret, on this item.
At this time, the public is present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on the agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment from those in the chambers first, then those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes, and your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. And we received no written public comments on this item. I don't believe I have any speaker card. And I do have one hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Carolina. Carolina, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. This was a lot of information to take in. I do talk to people frequently. I'm out, and I'm out in the community. I do a lot of volunteer work. So I do talk to a lot of people. And one of the topics that invariably comes up, because we're weird, is taxes. I have yet to speak to someone who views any type of tax increase or bond at this time in a favorable light. We just came out of COVID shutdown. A lot of people suffered and are still recovering economically from that period of time. And we already pay the highest taxes in East Contra Costa out of any of the cities that surround us. What we really need to focus on is getting more businesses to come here so that we can get additional sales tax revenue and other revenue streams that aren't the bank of the residents of Brentwood. The last bond that was passed was for the schools, which were sorely needed due to the lack of security and the schools being as old as they were. But, you know, as, as was mentioned before, the bond for fire three times did not pass. And after the school bond, I don't, I don't know that people have an appetite for increase in taxes. So I, I would strongly urge city staff to really pound the pavement, trying to get companies to move out here. We have the room, we have the land, we have empty buildings, we, we need some tenants. But yeah, so if, if you go through the expense of trying to pass a bond, please do not be surprised when it goes down in flames. Just letting you know. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comment, move into council discussion.
I know we need to do the general plan update, but if it's 10 to 15 years, 24 would be 10 years, I think we can hold off on that a little bit. I don't think we need to do it right now, and I know we need to, but if it's, if the normal is 10 to 15 years, I don't know why we have to do the 10, especially, we got to figure out what, what we have going on with PA 1 and with Costco and then talk about it then. I mean, if you guys want to, we will, but I am not in support of any tax increase. Our residents pay CFDs, which are melloruse for fire and police, and it is a lot of money. It's more than other people pay. And I think that they are heavily burdened, burdened in Brentwood with their taxes, like Carolina said. And I don't want to increase their sales tax either, because hopefully they get a little tiny break, you know, from all the property taxes, and they just approve Measure X. And we're not seeing anything with Measure X, right? Like, no one's doing anything for us in Brentwood, and we're all paying that tax, so I'm not comfortable doing that, unless it was specifically earmarked for something. And if the residents, like we do school bonds. So if we're going to do a tax, it needs to be specific for something, not just our operating. It's something that the residents will benefit every time they're buying something like from their sales tax. That's the only way I would support that. But I just, I, there's, I would feel uncomfortable, and I've said it for a long time, this day has been coming. We needed to get off of our developer crack. We are off of our developer crack for the most part, so we have to learn to live within our means.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Question on the general plan. What, if any, protections would, would come from that as far as like the needing to clarify things that are going to be impacted by state housing bills, for example? I mean, are there any additional protections that we're missing that, I mean, what are we trying to fix by doing it now, basically?
So just to clarify, this is a two-year budget. So if the general plan funds were set aside, we would likely start that process sometime in 2025, and then it could take, you know, up to two years to go through the update process. So by the time that we came out of the other side of that process, the general plan may be about 13 years old. In the past few years, just for the land use element, there's been a number of changes in state law that our land use element is a little out of step with. So the longer it's out of step, the longer it's out of step, and we have to make adjustments in other ways. Updating the general plan doesn't necessarily provide us protection, you know, so to speak, but it may make it more consistent with the law, just that particular element, for example.
Okay. I, I agree about the taxes. I, I think about like the business license increase, and I can't even, can't imagine making that change. We do hear that sometimes there are challenges working within, you know, small businesses trying to, to break in, so I definitely don't want to do that. I was going to mention Measure X, too. I think from what I've seen through my day job, there's more happening when it comes to social services, and it's correct, we have not seen a direct benefit to Brentwood at this time. And the idea of, of doing that, like having something local as far as a half cent on top of everybody's knowledge that they're paying a half cent for the county, eh, and especially considering too, the, the fact that the, the Fire Protection District, as much as everyone really wanted that, they didn't approve that. So I, I agree with, with Carolina and I agree with HoVita as far, oh, sorry, Councilmember Mendoza, as far as the appetite. That one just makes me nervous. I mean, we're still seeing a lot of suffering coming out of COVID, and the cost of living has raised so much, and yet not a lot of cola raises are, are rising up to meet that and the expenses of daily living. I mean, the gas prices, the grocery prices. So I hesitate on that one as well. Most of these I could see just being a major problem with our residents specifically, and I don't know that there were any that felt like such a perfect fit, like, yes, just let's go ahead and do that. That's my concern.
Councilmember Pearson.
I have to agree with, with the, with what I've heard on taxes. I just took a little quick dive and looked at our taxes, and one of the joys that I get, if we're trying to encourage consumers in our city, if we're trying to encourage more businesses coming here, if we're trying to encourage more hotels to build in our city, we don't raise taxes. We don't, we don't raise the cost of a business license. Brentwood and Oakley's taxes, 8.750%, and everywhere else besides Walnut Creek is 9.750 in East Contra Costa County. I absolutely love when I buy an item in Brentwood specifically and return it in Walnut Creek, and I get a lot more tax money back. Or I buy something, I get money back. So that's really awesome. One may think that, oh, well, you're the lowest, you're the cheapest in East Contra Costa County, so a half a cent won't be a big deal. A half a cent can mean a lot to a lot of people in our city. And I think that's why we're better in Brentwood, because we can figure out alternative means to increase our revenues, reduce our expenditures, but not raise the tax of the people who need the money. So I, I think that, again, well-stated Carolina tonight with another statement of, let's figure out other alternative ways besides taxing, taxing our people who probably don't even have enough to give to us, even, even if it is a half a cent. I'm, I'm not in favor of that. But I do like the idea of doing the general plan amendment, and the reason why is because of all the, or putting the, the reserves away for the general plan amendment. I like the ideal of it because we do have all the changes in state laws. And, and I like the protections that may come down from us doing a general plan amendment sooner than later. So, you know, I hear both sides of that thing, but I, I do like the idea of us having it there, I think in the presentation, and thank you so much for that. It was making sure we have the reserves there instead of trying to figure out where to get them from later on. And with, what was it, the decrease in the budget stabilization going down in 2027? I like the idea that we know that we'll have that surplus money sitting there to make sure that we can do the general plan amendment. So I am anti-tax. I'm so with you. But I do think we should put the reserve money away.
Can I follow up to say too, that in talking about the fact that our sales tax percentage is lower than a lot of other cities, our incomes are also lower? So I mean, if you're, if you're looking at that comparison, it doesn't make sense for us to go too much higher when we certainly don't have the incomes that you get in Walnut Creek. So it doesn't, it's apples and oranges. But I do agree with setting aside the money. I'm just, I'm wavering on whether it's critical for us to start that process so quickly and wondering about what we've been doing, like, you know, general plan amendments and things that are going to put those same protections in place quicker without having to go through the whole process that quickly. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So general plan amendments would be very targeted and specific to one or two policies, for example. Adopting the housing element is a general plan amendment. So we are allowed four amendments per element per year by law. So you can amend the housing element four times, you can amend the land use element four times per year by law. So that's certainly a strategy. Depending on what the policy is, it may just be concentrated on that element, it may not affect other elements. But every time you update the general plan, you have to make sure there's internal consistency throughout the document. That's also the law. So it just depends on what the update, focused update might be. It may be very easy just to update one amendment and one or two policies at a time. But the general plan will have to be updated at some point. That's just a natural course of, of community planning. And of course, my focus is on the land use element most of the time, but this is a citywide document, it affects every department in the city. So there's policies in there that affect the police department, that affect public works, that affect parks and recreation, that affect economic development, is a city's plan. It is often housed in community development to manage that process, but it won't just be work for my department to undertake, it'll be for the whole city, the residents, the council, the planning commission, and all that. So it is a big undertaking, but it is also very important because it's the vision of the city. So you can certainly do targeted amendments initiated by the council, initiated by staff, or whatever the case may be. That, that is something that is pretty regularly done in most communities, but it doesn't get at the, necessarily the bigger picture and updating that general plan for what the next 10 to 15 years of Brentwood may hold, what we know has happened the past 10 to 15 years. It's just not the same effort.
Got it. Thank you.
I would like to just make this as quick as possible because we don't need to reiterate everything that's already been said half a dozen times. I'm not in support of raising taxes and all of those that we've talked about, but I am in support. taxes and all of those that we've talked about, but I am in support of setting that money aside now to do the general fund, general plan update as soon as we can.
I, I, I agree. Yeah, the, the reason I'm concerned, and regardless of whether we, when we start the actual update, having that funding there is very important. We have all experienced the frustration in our community as residents and as council members of what's going on at the state, stripping away and holding hostage, and I will probably get criticized for saying that, decisions that we are, are made to make. And like you said in your presentation, there are mandates that come down from the state with absolutely no possibility of any resources to, to accomplish those mandates financially, or with, with the bodies and employees to do so. So when we have an opportunity to have, have funding in place for whenever that may be, I think we need to take advantage of it. And I also agree. Taxes is a four-letter word. And, and I think that we have an opportunity through our public works to potentially be able to stave off a, a tax increase decision until the time comes. I know it's going to be a few years down the road, but should we get this additional $5 million in revenue? And again, we know this is very early days in that. It would be wonderful, instead of having to raise taxes, to be able to give rebates and, and lower the price of cost of resources and what we provide to our community. So I feel the same way. So...
When it comes to the general plan update, I just want to make sure it doesn't put anything else we have behind, right? So like, if we're going to put it away, that's fine, but let's not rush into it. Because my concern is that then we have all these things that , you know, we're waiting on, and we're like, where, where is this? Where is that? That's my concern on that. And when it comes to this, I, this is going to be a bigger discussion, and who knows who'll be here. But if we're going to be making $5 million back, we've got to stop and think about what the residents are paying to produce those $5 million. And is part of it a payback to them? Because they're the ones paying for the equipment, right? Through their, through all of their utility bills. And when we, it got presented, it got presented with the notion of we could do various things. We could give them a credit back, or we could make money. So I think that that's going to be a bigger conversation. Because as a resident, I can tell you right now that if you took my money to pay for this equipment, and then now you're making money off of it when you told me it was just to provide sort of, like, water and, you know, all of my other stuff to me, that is going to be very, very upsetting. So just FYI, I would not count on the $5 million because I think you'd have people in here with pitchforks.
Well, that, that is a conversation to have at that time. And potentially, it could be even more if you had paid attention to, in the community. I'm not saying that you haven't paid attention. But if the community is aware of, of the potential here, this, this really could be something that would eliminate the need for a tax, potentially. And so I'd like to see how that works out before we start talking about raising taxes personally. Yes. So with that, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt the resolution amending the 2324 mid-year operating budget with the following change, the $1.1 million set aside for the general plan update.
Okay, we have a first.
I'll second.
I thought she was...
I'm, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that we would bring that reservation back with the draft budget. So it's just direction at this time to put it into the draft budget. But it's fine that it's in the resolution. I just wanted to make clear what we were asking tonight was for that direction.
Thank you. If we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this unanimous. The second part of the motion.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to request that staff bring back additional information on, actually, yeah.
I think you've made it all clear that you're not interested.
Just the MOU for the DBC, yeah.
So no need for a motion on that one, then? It sounds like we had council...
No, can we do it for additional information on the DBC MOU?
To make sure that that's a part of it?
We want it to be part of it.
Be part of a motion, sure.
Then, yeah, that's the motion.
Budget that we're coming back with in May.
No, we want it. How soon will this come back, though?
Tonight.
But this item, so it says, I move to request additional on, so this won't come back until May? I guess I need to understand the timing of the MOU and when we can decide to, like, if we're going to do that or not. Because I feel like I'm not getting an answer.
So I know this is a future agenda, but that's coming back before the adoption of your budget.
So we will get that before?
Prior to...
Okay, so then we don't have an agenda item, right? Then we don't need that second one.
What, can, can I just, never mind.
Okay, then I withdraw the request for a second vote.
And I withdraw the motion.
Okay, moving into item G2. This is related to the selection of a consultant for the senior center operational assessment and citywide recreational customer satisfaction survey. And City Manager Tim Ogden will present. Tim?
Mayor and council, consistent with council direction you gave on November 14th, 2023, where you authorized us to go out for a request for proposal to obtain a consultant who could do the senior activity center operational assessment and a citywide recreational survey. We have provided in the staff report three responses that were responsive and eligible to respond to the request for proposal. And we have three different firms. Xylo International Group has proposed a cost of $20,000, Matrix Consulting Group, $49,600, and Barry Dunn, $99,950. As a part of the original motion you gave back in September of 2023, you requested that these, that firms be independently evaluated. And so we provided some draft questions that you might want to consider as you consider the scope of work that they provided. And we have a resolution that's attached that is left wide open for you to select the consultant of, of your preference, and then insert the contract amount consistent with their request. But several different questions you could consider, you could obtain, making sure that the proposal sufficiently addresses how the firm's going to obtain sufficient feedback from the approximate 1,200 senior center participants over the time period you requested, obtain a minimum 30% response rate from the surveying of approximate 12,000 registered participants of recreational programming, how they would complete their findings by the expected project completion date of May 1st, 2024, ensure that they accurately benchmark comparisons city staffing levels, programs, and services offered for context in evaluating the city's efforts, as well as provide any additional recommendations that they think you should consider as a part of the contract. It's my understanding that all three have a representative participating via Zoom tonight, so you can consider asking some of the questions if you have follow-up to the proposals that you've received in your packet. And with your motion, you would direct us to then include the name of the consultant and the contract amount in the resolution, and authorize me to sign that contract. Then we would begin in haste to begin the work, which includes lots of data gathering and surveying and interviewing individuals, and providing some great feedback for you back by approximately May timeframe. And with that, open to any questions you have.
Questions of staff? Okay, no questions of staff. At this time, we'll open public comments.
At this time, the public present in the chambers and on Zoom are permitted to address the city council on the agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. We'll take public comment in the chambers, followed by those on Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired and we receive no written public comments on this item. And I don't have any speaker cards in the chambers. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Danny. Danny, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I caught just the tail end of this. However, what did catch my attention was the delta between the three. That's concerning, because, well, hopefully you will ask those questions. But if the parameters were the same, and you have such a wide delta, it seems a little odd. More importantly, though, the fact that we have to do this, I thought there was supposed to be an investigation, and then that was squashed. I didn't get a chance to talk to our city manager about it at his last meeting. Hopefully, that might be addressed, because we're, even on the lowest end, $20,000, we passed over on a $15,000 fix on a wall. So to consider even the $99,000, where do we even have all the questions answered before we get into a consultancy? That would be the question I'd ask. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolina. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So I, I had like a ton of questions, but really, is anyone familiar with these three companies? Because that, that was also what kind of stuck out to me. The difference between $99,000 and $20,000 is a huge difference. And what is the scope of work that we're giving these companies? What if we don't get what we're looking for in terms of the work? Is there going to be some type of workshop to put the questions together to make sure that the companies are actually executing what we need? Some transparency would also be very welcome, as we had so many seniors come in and voice their opinions. It would be really important for them to have a say in this, to make sure that the problem at the senior center and at Parks and Rec overall is, is fixed. That, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised and no speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion. Councilmember Pearson.
Yeah. One of the things that I would really like to see, I would like to see added to all three of these, I didn't see where council was integrated in making sure it was clarified what we, what our expectations were when we asked for this assessment to be done. So I, I would like for, want any of the consultants that we choose tonight to include a section to either have independent interviews with each council member, or for us to have a workshop so that it's very clear what our expectations are, what we're looking for, and so that our expectations are being met with, from our initial, from the interim of us crafting the agenda request to us voting on it. I would like that option. The other thing is, reviewing all three companies, I have to say, what stood out to me was Matrix Consulting. And I'd like to tell why. One of them is familiarity with the state of California. Matrix Consulting had services in Milpitas. Some of their consultants worked in South San Francisco. The nearest city was Hercules. So I was really impressed with the fact that they had done something very similar to what we requested. Also, I really liked, it was on page 363, what they did in Milpitas was operational and staff assessments to evaluate and align staff and practice with workload. One of the things that I consistently hear that comes from Parks and Rec is that we're just, we don't have the bandwidth, we don't have the bandwidth. And I think I've heard myself and Councilmember Mendoza say, well, you know, like, how many, what's the body count? What do you need? And it seems like there's some misalignment there. So I like the idea that Matrix Consulting, I don't know if they're, they're including this. They've talked about that in other projects they, they've done. That'd be really nice to include that in this. But I really like that operational and staff assessment to evaluate the workload. The other thing that I like is that they talked more about their best practice assessments. And, and I, and they compared it to best practices presented by national organizations. So if I had to make a recommendation tonight, I would recommend Matrix. I am a little, the smaller amount of $20,000, when I looked at that one, I didn't see that it, didn't seem as exhaustive as I think we were trying to, oh, that we were trying to go with. And then the other item was, I, I think one, one of the things is missing the mark from all three consulting firms. I didn't see any mention to DEI. I did see that the last company had one person who had some background in DEI, but I didn't see that being incorporated. I think one of the things that, that, I mean, I'm glad that we got to see, and thank you, Tian, I'm happy to give people flowers when they're here. You brought back the adaptive recreational information that I know that the Vice Mayor Meyer and myself were, were trying to get more and more information on, and we have a little, a lot more direction, and that's coming back to us very soon, and talk more about, and look at some of the directions in which Parks and Rec is going in. But there's a lot of other DEI initiatives that just gets, in this city, quite frankly, gets buried and is silenced, as if it's not as important. So it'd be nice if that is also incorporated into the discussion when it comes to Parks and Rec, because it is a, a very major deal for me. And you'll constantly hear me get as passionate as Councilmember Mendoza does about all the things she gets passionate about. So that's my little two cents.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate that suggestion about the council integration. I think that's a really good idea. I don't know if that's something that would be covered in the current, current proposals, or it'd have to be RFP'd again.
I, I believe I can address that on their behalf. The, two of the three proposals outlined it with more detail, so we can get a sense of how they computed the cost and how many hours they're going to spend on the interviews. But I think if they were to try to fit in five more people of the approximate several hundred they're going to perhaps interview, I, I think they'd be willing to do that. They are, they are on the Zoom call. You could ask them directly if they were going to consider it in the scope, and if that would affect the cost at all.
And which two companies are you talking about when you say two?
If you're asking my opinion, Matrix...
No, no, I mean, when you're, you're saying two of them, you, you think outlined that potential a little bit more than the other, right?
Matrix and Barry Dunn, I believe, were more thorough on detailing that.
Okay. And, and we can ask that question, but I do want to address Carolina's question and Danny's question about the, the really huge difference between the three, and just maybe a little bit more assessment on what those differences would mean to this specific study and the results of it, and, and any implementations about the, of what we get, what we learn.
The firms will have to defend their own cost proposals, but my guess would be some of those variances could be based on if there's a smaller firm that doesn't have as much overhead, if they're working remote, their costs might be less, or if they're new into this market, they might not be charging as much as someone who's been doing it for more years and can then exact a higher price. So there's, it's hard to, to make a judgment exactly just based on the cost proposals. But again, if you want to ask any of them any questions, I'm sure they'd be glad to defend what their proposals stated.
I, I would love to hear from them, but I, I wanted to also mention that a lot of this was very specifically driven by a list that we submitted. These are the exact things we would like to look at. And I think we were pretty thorough. We brought it forward, we all, you know, thought about it and put some more input into it. So I'm less worried about the scope of service as far as making sure that everything was checked off, because they all know exactly what it was we're looking for. And it's been published time and time again in many staff reports. It's also, this is something just for the public's information. This is something that we've been talking about for a while. So we did have a very thorough discussion on what it was we're looking to get from this. And I think the, the DEI you're talking about, 100% agree with you on that. I did see, in looking right now at the Xylo, that it's in here. But I would, I'd like to hear their feedback on that, too. I mean, if we're, if we could, are all three here, by the way? I mean, if we're, if we could, are all three here, by the way?
I think there were three people in the reports, Chaz Jordan, Lakita Frazier, and I believe, is it John Carson?
Would it be appropriate for us to, um, allow each like a five minute, uh, chance to, to really talk about what they're offering and what the differences are? Yeah. Thank you.
And, and we have, we have, Mr. Mayor, we have a request to, to bio break.
Yes, while we are allowing staff to prepare for interaction and the presentation will take a five minute recess. This time we will reconvene from our recess. Council member Mendoza will not be joining us on this item. So we will let her know when this item is complete. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on the discussion before your brief recess, a question had been asked regarding the possibility of having the chosen consultant interview the council members. And we just want to clarify that while that may be permissible in terms of interviewing you in your individual capacities for your own, um, uh, knowledge or experience with the senior center, you could not be providing direction to or otherwise directing the work of the consultant in those conversations, because that would inadvertently become a collective action of the city council, right? And would be a Brown Act violation. So if the council wants to be interviewed by the consultant, we'll need to make sure that it's along those narrow parameters that they will be interviewing any other individual in the community and not you in your capacity as council member as providing them with direction.
So follow-up question to that, if we move forward with the, the age-friendly ad hoc committee, could whomever is on that be the liaison, if you will? The, uh, the people interviewed, the two council members if there are two?
So you, you won't be taking action on that until you're done with this one? So you're going to have to decide whether or not you're comfortable waiting for that. If at that time you wanted to consider that part of the committee's duties, you certainly could. I think for right now, um, I just wanted to make clear to the council and to the public what sort of limited scope that would be. And that would apply even if it was just two members of a soon-to-be-formed committee, the same direction would hold.
And one addendum. If a committee has feedback, that would need to then come back to the full council to give majority direction to staff, so that could create some delays. And if they've got a stringent timeframe, unless you want to amend that, that that's, we're requested to make this as quickly, as done as quickly as possible.
But I think that if I'm understanding you correctly, it would be not the committee providing direction, but being surveyed as anyone else would on what the committee is looking forward to. If, if, as a committee member, as a member of the community, not recommendations, not direction, but for example, what are some things? If, I don't know what the questions are going to be, but if they were asking specific questions on the survey, as they would someone else from a, I wouldn't even say specialist, but from the perspective of our narrow focuses on the aging community, I think it would be very helpful to allow a committee member to just be a part of the survey process, not necessarily giving direction, because we've already given direction, right?
And yes, and one other maybe interesting point. If you approve a contract with them tonight, I'm attaching the scope that's in their proposal tonight as what we're holding them accountable to. So that's why it can't really change unless you change it tonight with their buy-in.
Would it be appropriate for the council to recommend two of our body to be the, uh, interviewees of, for the survey?
You could not approve the contract tonight. And as a future agenda item, require a, a request, a new committee to then interview them. Staff did not interview them based on your request originally.
No, 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 I think I'm explaining that wrong. Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I think what I'm trying to say is can we as a body, because, because council member Pearson's idea about us having some integration, I think is a good one, especially because this is so, this is council-driven, based on resident input. So I think that's a really important thing to note. What I'm trying to suggest, maybe not so well, is that we as a body recommend two of us that take part in the survey as interviewees. Instead of having that integration for the full council, like since the, the amendments have to happen tonight, if there are any, could we now make that, um, decision as a body?
So just looking at the scope that you approved back in November, what that provided was interview all facility rental and programming participants, existing and former staff, and current Parks and Rec Commission members who elect to participate about given items. So if you were being interviewed in one of those capacities, that would match what you had previously given direction for. But it was pretty narrowly drawn by the council at that point.
But then they presented something, they, they presented a wider scope. So when you look at the, what was returned by the companies, they added on city staff, stakeholders, I would consider us a stakeholder. And we're some type of weird quasi, not staff of the city. So they widened the scope beyond what we asked for. So I think, I don't see why we couldn't be interview, in the, in the, not to add direction. I know that's the fear here. That's not what we're asking, just to be a part of the survey.
Yeah. And I think just asking them if they have any concerns with that, if that changed their scope, if it changes their cost proposal to you. And if it doesn't, then I don't think there's going to be any issue with it.
Yeah, what's two more people out of 1,000?
Or five people. Sure.
So at this time, can we begin the interviews with, with the applicants? That would be great. How do we begin that process?
Would you like to interview all three? Would you like to narrow down?
Yes, I'd like to interview all three.
And just name the firm and then we'll find out who's represented tonight. There could be two or three different people that I'm semi-familiar with. Absolutely. So we'll call on a representative from Xylo International Group to answer a few questions from the council. We'll promote you on Zoom and then make you available to converse.
Could the representative please raise your hand? Could the representative from Xylo raise your hand so I could promote you as a panelist?
We can see that she's on, so maybe we move ahead and come back to her?
Let me try to promote her to a panelist and see if that.
If we don't get a response, do you want to move on to the next firm? And then we can come back if she stepped away. So we'll go to Matrix Design Group, Matrix Consulting Group then?
That would be helpful.
Could a representative from Matrix Consulting raise your hand so you could be promoted as a panelist?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Pennington. Thank you for joining us. We're going to ask that we give you five minutes to just present, uh, the, your answers to some of the questions that have been asked at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Pennington. Thank you for joining us. We're going to ask that, uh,
Okay.
How can we avoid that echo that's happening, that delay?
I'm not hearing one now. Do you have one on your end?
No, actually, that seems to be, to have been fixed.
I think before you had the council chambers on mute, so we couldn't hear you. That's why you weren't getting a response from anyone initially. So would you like me to go through the answers in the agenda, or are you going to ask them of us?
Mr. Pennington, thank you for this. We've got a very limited window, five minutes per candidate. And so I think what we would really like is, is just your explanation of how you differ and what it is about you that's going to specifically help support our goals for this survey, for this, the work that we're trying to do to improve things for our seniors in town. And DEI, and your thoughts on DEI. And if you have some feedback about integrating the interviews of two council members, and I don't know if there was anything else that was critical that came up, but yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, great. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here tonight. The Matrix Consulting Group was pleased to present a proposal to you. Hope it came through in our background, that we have some extensive experience in this area. In your area, we've done multiple parks and recreation studies, everything from programming assessments to detailed staffing and operational reviews. And I think one of you noted earlier, we've done a couple of projects with Milpitas. We did one as part of their park master planning, and one of the efforts that came out of that was a need for expansion of DEI initiatives in terms of programming, as they were looking forward into future efforts. And then we have just recently finished a detailed staffing analysis that was helping them align current services and service levels with their staff organization. Chaz Jordan is on the call with me, but I'll do all the speaking. We're also currently doing about eight other park assessments. It includes both senior center assessments, community center assessments, and general programming assessments as part of park master plans in Cordova, Bellflower, Desert Hot Springs, La Mesa, Montclair, Moreno Valley, all in California. So we have a lot of recent experience in the trends and services here that I think will help us address some of these concerns. In terms of including council member input, we can interview all five of you if you have an interest, that's not a problem. One way we might do this efficiently, if you, I mean, we can easily do one-on-one interviews, but we can also do a council workshop, if you like, as part of one of the focus groups that we talked about doing, and have a community-wide meeting where you can provide your input to our project team, but we can also hear from the public. It can be sort of one of those broad opening sessions, and perhaps you can help us get greater attendance at that by participating in it. So that, that's definitely something that is feasible. We are, I think, unique in our approach in that we have not only detailed subject matter expertise, but our approach is very fact-based and objective-oriented. We're going to tell you like we see it. Our goal is to let everyone have some say in this. So that is detailed interviews with the users and the program participants at the senior center, also the public, current staff and prior staff, commission members. When we do the community-wide survey, we're going to use multiple methods to try to achieve that response rate you're looking for. And while that 30% is a great target, it's much more than you need for a statistically valid survey. So you have great confidence, can have great confidence that the response rate is going to adequately reflect the views of your users and residents. In our recent work with Cordova, which we're doing in conjunction with another firm on their park master plan, we had the ability there to help them look at expanding DEI initiatives in terms of expanding their adaptive programming, their therapeutic programming, as well as providing multicultural programming, looking at not just where they are today, but where their community is growing. And that we sort of have to have that forward-looking approach to understand not where you are today, but where you're going to be in five years to set your staff up for success in that regard.
Can I break in as we have just about a minute left? One of the key things we're trying to do here is to make sure that our older adults and adults with disabilities are represented. And I'm wondering, as far as your engagement, how do you make sure that that inclusionary focus is driving this? It's not just, you know, waiting for someone to come to you, but how do you outreach to the point where they're actually going to do that?
We can outreach to them in a variety of ways. We use email, we use flyers, we can use attendance at the senior center. I mean, we have in our budget site visits, so we can actually do pop-in events. And if that's publicized, you know, we can talk to users of the center at their location. If there are other ways to reach them, we're going to talk with city staff about the best ways to do that. We're going to take advantage of every opportunity to reach them where it's most convenient. So if there is a special event, or there's something else, you know, we'll find a way to be there to be a part of that and provide that input. Well, we need to hear us from the most vocal and impacted users to really understand those issues. So we're going to take input from anyone on how best to achieve that and tailor our approach to hit that.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions? Appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pennington. I think you answered all of the questions very well. Thank you.
I'll call on Malina Zilo. She's in as a panelist now.
Good afternoon. Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to present. As a matter of fact, we did have a slide prepared for the presentation. I'm not sure if the time would allow, but more than happy to share, I do want to say, I do agree, our pricing is lower. One of the reasons for that was primarily looking at the median income of the city and taking into consideration how long the project was going to be about, the sample data, and the fact that as a smaller firm, we do, we are very agile and able to work very fast. We have a small team that is extremely competent. Though we are not based in California, we have done a lot of work in California, more recently with the city of Avalon, and currently working with the housing authority of the county of Santa Cruz. We have a lot of experience working with cities and municipalities all over. Very recently, we did a full strategic plan for the Office of Economic Development and International Trade in Colorado, specifically to DI. DI, being a women-owned organization and operated, it is something that is truly important and something that we do incorporate in every project we take on. We do want to hear from the marginalized groups. We do want to hear from those voices that may not be as loud or participate in some of the decisions that the council takes on. And we do a lot of work when it comes to surveys. That is something that all of them, we try to, for them to be strategically valid. I do agree, 30% is something that we have achieved in the past, very often in smaller community. We have surpassed that, and it is amazing to see the results and the fact that community chooses to participate. If you'd allow me, I'd love the opportunity to present and showcase some of the work that we have done, so you have a better understanding of what our final projects look like. Taking a minute to learn with... As an organization, we are committed to the long-term success of our clients through strategic planning reinforced by mission, vision, and values. When it comes to the public sector, we enjoy the work that we do. The impact that cities and the community, you have on communities is so far-reaching, and it is beyond rewarding when it comes to the work and the difference that we're able to make. So that is a really big factor when we bid on those opportunities. The kickoff, obviously, that is where we become very thorough. We got the background and all the relevant information from previous reports, and we discuss in more depth the community engagement and the goals that you have. Then we dive into the interviews with stakeholders and conduct the citywide survey. I will try to be very quick in regards to your project experience, but I do want to highlight some of the work that we've done, particularly to bias visibility study that we did in the region in Oregon with the counties of Benton, Lincoln, and Lynn. This is some of the initiatives and posters. We worked with several community organizations, as well as, this is a more recent community survey that we did, again, in the city of Anita, which is a smaller community in Oregon. This is some of the flyers and the outreach materials that we used. And as far as the strategic recommendation that I mentioned earlier from the Office of Economic Development and International Trade, this is some of the work that we did. I will stop sharing. I think we're at the time, but more than happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure it would be fair for us to offer another, one candidate more time.
Okay.
I think there's okay to have a little bit more flexibility. If staff were doing this, we would ask any questions that we need to come up with a consultant that we're recommending for your approval. Since you're now taking on that role for this unique project, don't recommend it for anything else. Then if you need to ask more questions till you're satisfied, I don't see any concerns with that. This isn't like interviewing a commissioner where you've got a rigid process, there is no process for this. You want to find the best consultant for the work you're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Is Malina available still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't expecting the slideshow, because I, we had read that during our research prior to the, to the meeting. My question would be too, my initial question would be around working with older adults. Have you had any experience on doing anything that's specific to parks and rec, adaptive programming, senior center programming, that kind of thing?
Not particular in parks and recreation. That is one of the reasons that we are a little bit lower when it comes to the pricing. I do sit on the boards of several nonprofit organizations. So do you work with, community engagement is something that is truly important to me and to my heart, and something that I'm extremely involved in the, in the community.
So if your agency, and of course, if anyone else wants to break in, if your, if your agency is out of state, how do you promote this engagement without being able to see people in person?
A lot of that is done through, through the outreach using several methods. Like I showcased earlier, we do have posters, we try to promote through social media, Zoom, phone calls. When it comes to certain communities, we definitely have been on-site for several, for several days and weeks in order to have that in-person engagement, which I do think is super important, to have that in-person touch. And for the older generation, which may not prefer the online communication, or may not be as tax savvy, we try to meet people where they are. Some of the older, the elderly do prefer that in-person, or having the ability to speak to somebody on the phone. We do have interpreters that we use, so when it comes to making sure, we do have a good Hispanic representation. That's something that we do highlight, and all our surveys are in multiple languages at times, depending on the community as well.
Okay. And your potential in-person engagement, is that included in your, in the budget? The travel?
That is, it'll be a little bit more, but that significantly more. Like I said, this is something I'm super passionate about, giving back to the community. My background is Wall Street. When, if you had asked me 10 years ago, when I first started the firm, that I would enjoy working in the public sector as much as I do, nobody would have believed it. But like I stated earlier, the impact that you have on thousands, the lives of thousands of people, and as a firm, being able to be involved in that, it's something that's truly important to us.
Great, thank you. No more questions from me.
Any further questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Z.
And if we can have a representative from Berry Dunn, raise your hand. And I'm promoting Jeffrey Milks to panelist.
Am I out?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Milks.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Council. It's a pleasure to be able to have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit more about our proposal, answer your questions, and talk to you generally about Berry Dunn and the team that we put together to, to help you along this journey with this funding project. Lakita Frazier is on the call somewhere here on Zoom as well, and she may want to join as well. I'd like to take my five minutes or four and a half minutes left and, and really break it up into two areas. And first, talk to you a little bit about what the work is that we are proposing that we would do. And the next, the last minute or so, talk to you a little bit about why our proposal, why the work we're looking at doing is a little bit higher in terms of the price in comparison to the others you're looking at. So let me start to talk a little bit about the engagement effort that we're suggesting or recommending. A full slate of stakeholder meetings and interviews that would include all of you that's already, already embedded into the project. We would look at key leaders and other folks in the community, key senior advocates, and ensure that members of the health, health industry, as well as business leaders, everybody comes to the table. The intention there isn't to bring everybody just to the table, but really make the table big enough to, to, to give everybody those opportunities. Move into focus group interviews and focus group meetings with many community members, many seniors, many older adults, folks throughout the spectrum of, of senior activities. In doing this engagement, one thing that separates us, that we think is a separator, is the fact that Lakita and I, and really the entire team that are involved in our proposal, are former parks and recreation directors. And so we put a different hat on than just a normal consulting, consulting operation or organization. And we've done this successfully. The cities of Harupa, Palmdale in Southern California, city of Paris, Monobello, Nevada, which is there in the Bay Area, the Greater Vallejo Recreation District, these are all projects, these are just some of the, a few of the projects that Berry Dunn has worked, engagement, operations, staffing assessments, recreation assessments... operations, staffing assessments, recreation assessments and the like. And I I bring those folk those that particular list forward because those are ones that I've managed. I've got about 40 years of experience in the field, as do many of the other member team members that that, you know, that are on our team. And we approach this with the idea that we want you to be successful. And we want to ensure that the assessment and the plan is fully implementable. So engagement is the start. Engagement is necessary. We move from there into a statistically valid survey with a partner, E T C Institute. We can provide you a a survey on a Survey Monkey or on clipboards or what have you, you know, as you would like. However, we've engaged one of the top two, we think, in the United States in terms of survey research to give you a proper survey, one that's statistically valid as well. We've included in our proposal a full recreation analysis. So you can see what programs work and don't, whether they're offered at the right time, whether they're offered in the right locations and and how communication enters into into things for seniors. We'll be able to tell you for particular age groups, how you communicate with seniors and how you're doing it now. How do they prefer communication versus, you know, how they're receiving information now? The staffing and operations assessment will be a significant portion of that. Of course, we enter all of this in with a with a strong equity lens. We approach it with partners that we will we will engage in order to to bring people to, you know, to those tables. We have a a team member, Dr. La Carre, who's local in the Bay Area. And I know the Bay Area pretty well. I'm a former director in in a in in a community there as well. Marketing, benchmarking, you've asked for quite a bit of scope. And again, I want you to be successful regardless of of which firm you choose. But make no mistake about it, you've asked for a lot of hours, you've asked for a lot of work. And that work requires extensive time, extensive service on site. And a lot of those kinds of things, Spanish translators, Spanish trends, translation that goes with the D E I opportunity. We need to look at access to the facilities. We need to look at access to programs, a bit of the A D A to it. So all of these things, all wrapped up, require a significant amount of of effort. And that's why our 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 number of hours that we've allocated in the proposal may cost a little bit more, but we believe it's necessary to do the job properly.
Thank you. That was a that was a pretty powerful five minutes. I mean, I think you you did a very good job of like fitting everything we were we were asking about into into that five minutes. I think the only follow up question I have would be that the in person engagement we were talking about. One of the other candidates was talking about actually attending events in person, things like that. What is it? What does that in person engagement look like to you?
Well, as per hour, oh, my timer isn't running, so now I don't have to.
That's okay. You can answer the question.
Okay. What it what it tells me, what it says to me is we need to be there to do significant enough engagement, to attract people, to to communicate with them, to ensure that there's a sense of trust that's built. And and I I have to tell you that it's going to be really difficult to create a survey without having that engagement initially. We need to know what the key issues are. We need to know what people in the community, the leadership, the council, commissions, advocacy groups, we need to hear from people and then we can start to think about creating the survey. We have in our proposal, not only our folks who are on the ground, living there already in the Bay Area, but I'm out of Portland, Oregon, and I'm an Alaskan flight. Okay, don't don't laugh. I'm an Alaskan flight down from Portland. In fact, I've got three trips to the Bay Area in the next three weeks for for another project. It is absolutely what I do. The this these are not other duties as assigned for us. So in terms of engagement, we will figure out, you know, who our partners are. We will figure out who we invite to the to the engagement. We will follow up with them. They'll have multimodal opportunities, meaning sitting at the table in one on one or two on one stakeholder group meetings, sitting in meetings with 10 to 15 focus group community members, ensuring that everybody's involved. But again, we need to ensure that that, you know, folks are comfortable and they trust us and that we're able to communicate at a level where, you know, senior issues can can surface. And again, part of that is ensuring that we approach our D E I initiatives with respect and and ensuring that everybody who who participates knows that they've been heard. It's fully transparent. We publish on a website, everything, every statement that people are making. We ensure that folks have that opportunity to review. The recommendations, of course, will come to commission, will come to you for guidance. We can will do, you know, whatever workshops are necessary to ensure that and and you know, ensure that that you're fully, fully comfortable with the engagement. But again, the engagement is the starting block. The survey is really where you're going to receive, you know, that 3,000 or 4,000 responses. Because you have asked a lot. It's 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 not, it's not an easy task, but it's not a task that we we aren't prepared to fulfill for you.
Thank you. Did anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you for that. I think we're at this point done with these little mini interviews. I want to say that I do recognize this is not our typical act of practice. But this, again, this agenda item was resident driven. This was based on outreach from residents who had concerns. And so I think it is our duty as council members to make sure that as we go through this process, we are vetting any participants. We are making sure that that the people that we engage to be part of it are meeting the the goals that we've set aside, that the end product is going to be something that helps us to make sure our older adults and adults with disabilities and our D E I adults are feeling heard and represented. And so that, I think it's valid for us to spend a little bit of extra time on this. And hopefully, the public is understanding of that as well.
Did we want to give the representative from Matrix the same opportunity for the back and forth? I think that would be fair since we've had that with the others.
Yeah, that did kind of happen, didn't it?
So if 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 the representative from Matrix would like to have the opportunity for some back and forth, I think it would make the playing feel more equal. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, good afternoon. We are here to answer any other questions you may have that may be in addition to what we've already presented.
Any any further questions?
Yes. In in your initial interview, you talked about meeting the users at their locations. Can you talk a little bit more about how you intend to do that?
Sure. So as a part of our our proposal, part of that will be at the senior center itself and working with either community groups or groups of the patrons that regularly meet there and and setting up times where we would be there during those high traffic areas so that we can try to get as much input as possible. There's also drop in options that we'd like to pursue with staff when we beginning the project process of other areas of town where there may be community focus for that age group, where we could come and have a conversation with them as well, that may be separate from the senior center to get some additional input that may be about how we can improve programming in the senior center to get those individuals there. So we look at various different community activities like that to go and participate in working with staff to to get those scheduled and then we would actually attend and do those in person.
Thank you. Just one more quick question. When we were initially speaking, you talked or somebody talked about being subject matter experts. Can you give us a little bit more on that, please?
Sure. I I am on my video just from start because I said it was stopped by the host. So I'll I'll handle that since I talked before. So we have been doing these as a firm for for 20 years. I've been doing it for 15 with the firm and there it goes. So during that last 15 years, I've been spending a lot of time on parks and recs. I have not been a parks and rec director, but I'll let my experience and and success serving other clients in California and around the nation warrant that. We've specifically specifically looked at dedicated centers like senior centers. Did we, as part of an organization wide study, we did it for the city of Albuquerque that had like a dozen senior centers, very high profile issue at the time, because in many cases, they were located right next to community centers, but there was no sharing of services. They were completely separate. You couldn't, you know, so the senior center is empty all evening. The other center was overloaded and they couldn't share services. We had to deal with a lot of political things to get to the best service outcomes. We just did a study in Chatham County, looking at a very unique center. It was a weightlifting center, but it shared its center with an adaptive programming community nonprofit. And we met with that group as well as stakeholders to say, how can we better utilize this facility? And seniors were one of the underserved population in that area. And one of the recommendations was to expand some of the services to pull them in. So I think our our broad experience across the country demonstrates, you know, our ability to do this, you know, the success, the fact that prior clients come back to us for subsequent studies such as Milpitas. We did a park master planning and then when they needed a deeper dive to look at staffing, they came back to us and asked us for our assistance. I think that tells us we're providing the the level of support and the the type of recommendations that are useful to our clients. Thank you. Thank you. I don't think there are any further questions regarding that. So thank you very much, Mr. Penney.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, now moving into our our discussion.
This this is definitely a challenge. I mean, we are stewards of our residents' taxes. And so we have to be cautious and yet make it so that any work and any investment we're putting into this effort means something, has some results that are tangible and usable. And so I frankly, ideally, I I I really liked what Barry Dunn brought up and addressed and and just kind of went over. But I I believe that's something that we should not be budgeting at that amount. I don't think that's that's the kind of the pie in the sky. And I think there are a lot of things that we can get from another group that are sufficient for our needs for a little bit less. And and this is, again, this is hard. This is not to offend anyone or play favorites or anything like that. It's just we are really working here with being responsible with our our residents' money and making sure that what we do and what we receive here is something that we can actually use moving forward. So with that, in in my personal feeling, looking at the consideration of the three, I do feel like Matrix Consulting Group was for me, the top of the list, based on the experience with Parks and Rec, the experience with senior centers specifically, the experience with the adaptive programming and and their initial discussion around the in person engagement. I think that I liked the the discussion around trust as well, but I think this initial, let's talk about that first kind of thing with that in person engagement, will make a huge difference in the response that we get and having it be something that's valuable and usable.
I I would agree to every point. In addition, I I really know, having participated with with our community and and our senior community in in a lot, for for many years, all of us have been a part of our community. And one of the things that we we do have access to as part of the programming is partnership with other nonprofits that do focus on delivering specific resources and programming. And having a a company that has has the experience of being able to marry things together, get to the core of what the issues are and not have to recreate or duplicate services. I I think Matrix was something, when I was reading what their presentation was and and what was just spoken, I think that they would do a very good job in in addition to being fiscally responsible for for our budget as well.
Yeah, as I stated earlier, I won't re restate what I said already, but I think I really like what they did in Milpitas. If if anyone looks at the staff report, it was really well stated for Matrix. I appreciate all the presentations that we got tonight. I think everybody was well stated. And it does make it difficult when we have to face you all as panelists here. But no, it is, I think, for what we're looking for, I am liking what was stated by Matrix. In addition to the willingness to pivot and shift for our additional ads tonight for the D E I component and the component to incorporate city council members in some type of information gathering. When it's community based, where we're all here, I I really liked the first suggestion. It was like, we can do it where stakeholders, residents are all there and council. I like that idea. So that being said, I I just, my choice would be Matrix tonight.
Okay, so do we, Councilmember Orlemans?
I could just say ditto again. I I really, the experience of Barry and Dunn was phenomenal. And and you kind of want to lead towards that experience, but being stewards of the the taxpayers' money, I would also go with Matrix and with what I've heard so far. If you guys don't mind, I'll just go ahead and make a motion. Are we okay with that?
Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
We do.
Can staff ask for one clarification before a motion is made? Margaret, could you share my screen? Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda.
I'm sorry, I missed something here.
It's coming. So just looking at the R F P that the council had approved, be sent out to the various consultants. It indicates that you would consider the following qualifications in deciding whether or not to choose a given consultant. So it's general qualifications, experience, proposed staffing, pricing, proposed approach, responsiveness, references, and then the interview which you conducted tonight. So listening to the commentary on the dais, I've heard you touch on each of these. But if you wanted to clarify in your motion, whether you are choosing whatever consultant you're going to make a motion as to on the basis of these qualifications, then that would be helpful for the record. So we have an understanding as to the basis of the council's decision.
I think I understand. Yes. So I would like to make a motion as detailed in the staff report. I move to adopt the resolution awarding the contract to Matrix. Can you put that back on the screen, though? Thanks. Because of their general qualifications, the relevant experience of their interviews and their interview process that they've proposed, their proposed staffing being sent into the community, the pricing being in the mid range and of the proposals we've seen, their proposed approach as to how to start this by starting with small meetings and then growing, then creating the interviews and their responsiveness to our questions. Oh, and and the during the interview process, I'm sorry, I missed the whole bottom of the screen. The interview process that during the process gave very honest, easygoing answers and we're able able to talk to, which I feel will make it even better for the citizens that are being interviewed during this process. And then their references being asked to come back to communities they've already presented to and done studies for couldn't have been better. So.
I'll second that.
And then the price of, I'm sorry. And in the amount not to exceed the 49,600.
I second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, I'm going to thank all of the applicants for their participation. At this time, we will move into item G three. And we will also give opportunity for Councilperson Mendoza to return.
We'll give her just a minute here to settle back in. Maybe have to log back in as well.
Okay, this item is consideration of city council committees, committee assignments for 2024, as well as the proposed dissolution of two committees. And City Manager Tim Ogden will present. Tim?
Yes, so this staff report outlines three proposed new committees as requested through the future agenda process over the last few months, as well as the recommendation to dissolve the Brentwood Neighborhood Committee. Unfortunately, due to poor recruitment efforts, poor results of those recruitment efforts and the State Route Four noise committee. of those recruitment efforts, and the State Route Four Noise Committee that has not met some time and seems somewhat obsolete based on the Sound Wall decision. And then an opportunity for the council to review the various committee assignments and make any changes you'd like, as well as any descriptions noted in the staff report, including a staff-proposed recommendation to changing to the Land Use and Development Committee, that if the set schedule falls upon a holiday, it would just automatically move to the following Monday, so that the council and stakeholders involved can anticipate when the next meeting would be held. And so available to answer any questions, we have included, thanks to our city attorney here, a new category in the committees that we haven't previously shown before, but this gives you a little sense of when the meeting schedules are. So you can better plan your schedules accordingly if you want to be on those committees. Or if it's a council directive meeting schedule, you can then change it as well. So kind of an open slate, and we're here to help assist you as you consider the committee assignments therefore.
Can you put them on the screen?
So at this time, we'll start just with the age-friendly committee ad hoc. Who would like to?
Can I ask a question before we get to that? There is, currently in Brentwood Unified School District, there is a DEI committee that I serve on in an individual capacity that I was not able to serve on as a council member. But I think it would be helpful, we have people from the school district on that committee, we have principals in the school and in our community on their staff and residents in the city of Brentwood. I would like to see if we would be interested in adding a council member on that committee. I think it would be very helpful because there are questions that are asked specifically about the city, and I think it would be nice to have representation there. So I would like to add that as a committee or seek representation. And I was instructed that this is the proper time to do it.
I'll take a turn. I believe what's agendized and published for the community to see and participate, and if they have any public comments, is the committees are outlined here. If there's a new committee you're envisioning or a council assignment, we could certainly put that on a future agenda and under the future agenda request section of the agenda and get that scheduled.
Okay, at this time, let me clarify. Are there any questions regarding this? Clarifying questions, staff regarding these, then we'll go into public comment, then we will go into committee selections.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Regarding the age-friendly communities, in my head, that, of course, represents council and a staff member, but I would like to see stakeholder from at least one, two stakeholders in the community. And I don't know if that's something that, I mean, how would that work? Because it's an ad hoc, I'm not sure if that's different.
Do it a couple of different ways. One, invite them to participate and regularly weigh in with their opinions. If you wanted them to have an equal seat at the table with voting kind of considerations, that might need to be enumerated here in more detail then.
Got it. Thank you.
And then what kind of selection process, what kind of recruitment process, all those kinds of things.
If we're able to do some engagement with it, make it a clear invitation of the senior center, for example, I think that would suffice.
And it might also transfer that from an ad hoc to a standing committee. So you'd want to be aware of that in the Brown Act requirements that attach as a result.
Yeah, to be frank, I kind of, I wondered why both DEI and age-friendly were considered ad hoc as opposed to standing. I mean, I know we've had discussions off and on about this, but in looking at it and a little bit diving a little more deeply into the staff report and what everything looks like, I was a little, I don't know, I thought we should probably talk about that. This is not work that's going to be one and done. It should be, if it's being done well, an ongoing discussion.
A great question, and perhaps I should have enumerated that better in the staff report. So we've outlined in the staff report the difference between the ad hoc committee and then the standing committee. I'll just quickly summarize a few points. So if it's an ad hoc committee, it's temporary in nature, shorter-term duration typically, but laser-focused and maximum flexibility. The Brown Act doesn't apply. You can schedule meetings whenever you want. You can invite guests. You can cover a broad range of topics within that scope that's identified here. Whereas the standing committee has regular set meetings. It has to comply with the Brown Act. It has to have published agendas and minutes. It's a little more complicated, perhaps costs more if there's staff overtime, et cetera. So it's a little more challenging. We tried to give you the most flexible options first. You can certainly change those to standing committees.
So if, for example, we launch these committees as ad hocks, and we decide, you know, six months, nine months, a year into it, this isn't quite done. We need to keep going. What does that look like?
Great question. That would probably be, say, the next January, we'd say, if you want to continue it, now that it's not a short-term duration, laser-focused scope of work, it probably needs to be a standing committee at that point. You'll notice with the budget committee, we identified very clearly the budget year, so that once you're done with that budget year, the committee as an ad hoc would expire. If you wanted to have it be an ongoing process, standing committee is more appropriate.
Otherwise, if it wasn't working, like her question is six months, we can bring it as a future agenda item request?
Absolutely. And just by way of reminder, there's four ways to get future agenda items done. Typically, ninety percent, you only use one of them. So there's three other ways to do it. And that might speed some things up.
Thank you. It was really, it was clear on the budget why it was ad hoc based on the year, but I wasn't super clear on the other. So I think the idea of being able to later on change it if we need to and kind of testing the waters and see how it goes, I think that's fair, at least in my opinion.
Any further clarifying questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open public comments.
This is the time for the public to comment on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. Remarks are limited to three minutes. And I have no speaker cards, and I see no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments and move into selection.
I would like to stay on LUD. I love that committee. And I'd like to be on Budget. If that's cool. Those are the two. I mean, I love interagency too, but, you know, I know I can't be picking everything. So those two is what I would like.
Go down the line, okay. I would like to be on, this is no surprise, the Race and Equity Committee.
What?
Were you shocked?
I'm so shocked.
And also, this is going to be a huge surprise for everybody, but the age-friendly community. I think I know who else wants to be in that vacant spot, but I'm not going to make, I'm not going to speculate. And I also would like to be on LUD. I wanted to be on it last year, and I'm really interested in being on LUD this year, so.
I have a question about that. And it's not like, this, my concern about that is most of the items deal with chamber stuff. Well, you have to recuse yourself. Because if we want someone that can come and vote and speak, and the most important stuff is chamber-related. And last time, we did the grants, you had to recuse yourself. And that's the biggest thing we do.
Yeah, because I had a client on that grant proposal. That was the only reason why. Other than that.
But you're also a member. And I think you can't vote on something that's chamber if you're a member.
A member of the, I'm not a member of the chamber. My business is a member of the chamber.
But you own your business.
I'm an employee. I'm an employee of my business. To just be clear, I'm an employee of my business. I don't own the business. I'm an employee of it. So it's a corporation. But I don't, as long as I'm clear in
Yeah.
in the three options that I learned about conflicts of interest, I wouldn't seek to get any type of benefit from a business. Being a chamber member doesn't give me a financial interest.
Okay. It's just, I just want to make sure there was no conflict, because I knew you recused yourself last time.
And I'm really upfront about recusing myself, and I get it, like, we don't constantly want to recuse myself.
Yeah. And I'm like, you know, I don't want to be in a meeting and have to be like, oh wait, no, it's just me and Anita or whoever. I don't know who is on it from planning. You know, me and one other person. And the other person's not even a voting person. It's just the two council people.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would weigh in on is I hear you saying that your employer's participation in the chamber doesn't necessarily result in any financial impact to you. And the Political Reform Act would preclude you from participating in governmental decisions in which you had a financial interest. So if that's not the case, then we don't worry about the Political Reform Act. There are other varieties of conflicts, such as common law conflict of interest, and we would have to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. So.
And I think all of us have common law conflicts of interest. There's not one person up here who wouldn't have some type of common law conflict of interest. For example, if you bought a ticket to a chamber event, you have a common law conflict of interest if you went to it, because you get joy from going to those events. You interact with people. So specifically, I don't see why I wouldn't have one different that I would be able to articulate. Here's where it is, but there's no bias or me getting any type of benefit from anything. The one item that I spoke to before was because I had a direct conflict of interest in that we were going to give a grant to someone possibly who was also a current client of mine. So that was why I completely went in the back and recused myself from that. But we'd cross that bridge if we got to it. And yeah, I don't think it would be a biggie.
And she has the recuser spot. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Yeah.
I don't want to be stepped by myself.
Yeah, no.
Were those the three that you were?
And I want to stay on, I want to kick Councilmember Orlemans off PAL, because PAL, again, is one of my favorite committees, but he will never, ever let me do that. So if I can be his sidekick, I would love to be his backup to PAL in perpetuity.
The alt.
The alternate. Last man.
Out of curiosity, so for example, the interview committee, Councilmember Mendoza, are you still interested in being on that? I'm not saying I'm just.
Sorry. If someone else wants a chance, it's a pretty interesting night when you interview them. It's, I like it. I think it's fun. I think mayor might not like, I talk a little bit too much and say a little bit too much. But it's nice to know who is applying and what they bring to the table. I mean, I enjoy them. We've had some really good interviews.
And then Councilmember Pearson, interagency, what are your thoughts on that one? I mean, I guess what we
I'm okay with staying on it. I mean, if it happens quarterly, it's not, it's really a moment for.
I'm okay with staying on that one. It's an opportunity for us to kind of hear from all the agencies. We just kind of talk about what we're doing. And so it's more of a date committee. But I definitely want to stay on the league, just with my current, I just really like what we do in the league. And I see why you were on it, where you were on it, and where you went. And I'd like to stay there if anyone else doesn't want to fight me for it.
And, you know, I would stay on interagency. I like it because we take things from here, like we took the tobacco.
Yep.
That's where the pride flag initiated, like flying the pride. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that is a lot of fun, and I really enjoy our trustees. But if someone else wants it like that, you know, I got to pick my battles.
Last man.
Thank you. So, and I would agree, it is a matter of like picking your battles and being fair and all that. So no surprise, my first will be age-friendly. I know everyone's shocked even more so on that one. I really would like to stay on AG. I've enjoyed that one immensely and loved where it's gone. I had LUD as my third, but given that last year, this was a coin toss, I feel it's only fair to pass that one over. And then my fourth was going to be school interagency. But it's not, you know, and I definitely want to do the continuation of being the alternative to the contrast of mayors. Can you slide down, please, on the slide? Thank you. I don't know that I think there was anything else that was specific to me in that group except being like the alt for, oh, that's right, EIFD. Is that even still necessary?
It has not been eliminated yet. So at this time, it's still on your committee list.
So I mean, I feel like it's, there's not really any point in removing it at this point because we don't really do anything. But certainly, as we get closer to the Innovation Center, it would be something to reboot at that time. But I guess at this point, there's no reason to make any changes. Is that what we're thinking?
I would say it's not as attractive as it previously was before the county put together a policy that was really making it more difficult to form an EIFD. We haven't given up entirely on it. We're going to keep trying to do it, especially as the Innovation Center gets infrastructure and starts moving forward with prospects. That's a prime EIFD example where we'd be able to pull back some of those revenues and create some opportunities. They're not as interested in the downtown or the Brentwood Boulevard EIFDs, so that one has less interest and less viability going forward. But definitely with the PA1, we'd still like to chase that. But no meetings until we get some concurrence with the county, and that just hasn't happened yet.
Okay. And I mean, no offense, Councilmember Mendoza, I'm not going to pitch for the budget committee. I don't want the budget committee. I do enough of that in my day job. And it's not my life the way it is yours. It doesn't thrill me the way, like, I don't light up when I speak about budgets the way you do. I mean, seeing, and I want to be completely appropriate and fair and open about this discussion. If I, the DEI committee does sound interesting to me, I want to make sure that I'm able to represent in a way that is fair and equitable, and so that I'm not a person of color. If Councilmember Mendoza is more interested in that, I understand that completely. But there's also the inclusionary part of that, which to me also would include like the ageism and the, right? So I would be honored to be a part of that work. I just want to make sure I'm being very fair about that.
No, it's fine. And I think as a person of color, we appreciate having allies stand by our side. So I'm glad that you even mentioned you want to be on it. So thank you.
Okay.
I just want to add, thank you for that point, that you, thank you for that example you just said just now, for making space for people of color to say, you can have a seat first. Thank you. And then also, I want to say you also, though, is race inequity. So you check other boxes that need support. For example, fair pay and wages for women and other boxes that you may invisibly or visibly display or tell us about, that you check boxes. But I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
When it came to the school DEI, does that have to be a future agenda item? That we can't, there's no way to add it right now just as a line item?
Say that again.
The DEI committee, I don't understand, if we're talking about committees, just because it's not listed, I don't, I mean, because we're trying to evaluate workload, right? So it's like, it'd be nice if we could just add it.
So you're saying a different committee that does DEI as opposed to race inequity?
So as of today, we're lucky that Councilwoman Pearson sits on DEI for Brentwood Unified School District. So I don't understand, I mean, I understand, but the agenda is committees. And it doesn't say limited to these. It just says a committee assignments.
I think if you go to page 393, we have a clear category that says proposed new committees, and we outlined the description of what that committee would do. Legal counsel can give some more feedback, and then you can do what you want to do.
But does it say it's limited to these?
Now, the issue is whether or not the public would know that you were going to be discussing that tonight. That's the litmus test that we use. And I don't see a lot on here that indicates that you would be considering something along those lines.
But they know we're talking about committees in general. So I think if we're talking about committees in general, and the reason I say this is because it's like, I think we're making that focus way too narrow. I think we need to be able to have some wiggle room, and I don't think that what we're asking for is out of scope. So I would like to be able to add it to this list. I don't think it's out of scope. I don't think anywhere we said it's limited to these. But I don't know. I mean, I just wish we could.
And I appreciate the fact that you are Perry Mason when it comes to everything you want and you're ready to. But I think to be, have an overabundance of caution and protect all of us in the eyes of the community is first perception. I don't disagree about the additional. I think that's great. I think just to use an abundance of caution, I would prefer to have it as a future agenda item and to accomplish the same thing. Just.
One more question on that, if that's okay. Is it, there is a crossover between race and equity and DEI. And would it be appropriate then to consider that an extension of the Race and Equity Committee, thereby saying one of its members could be the liaison to the, I mean.
Okay, I think you're on to something there. The agenda's written, you could change the description of these proposed committees. So if this committee then selects somebody to be on something external, I don't know that that would be a conflict. But it's working through what's in the agenda, and that's these three proposed committees currently.
I was just about to ask, like, can we just have part of what we do in that committee is have one of us go or both? Thanks. That's why we were trying to, by to be on it.
Let's update the description of that committee.
You'll include it in your motion.
There we go.
So are you finished, last man?
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay. Councilman Orlemans?
Okay. I would really rather not give up PAL. I enjoy the teamwork that we have there, even though you're the alternate and whatnot. Um, I would like to stay with the other committees that I'm on. But if somebody is very, the Tri Delta, uh, the Transplan as your alternate, or I would like to stay unless somebody is really interested in getting on one of the committees that I'm currently sitting on. Um, but I would also like to add, and I, I don't know how this works, but I would like to add the Budget Committee. I would like to be part of that if there is a, the ability to add me to there. The last one is the agro-agroco- Agriculture Enterprise Committee. But I don't know if you're, are you as the mayor required to be on that committee?
I'm not required to.
Well, okay.
Well, I, I will tell you, I have been on that committee and off of that committee from the, since I've been on council. The subjects that, that we handle on that committee are really super important to me. But I also believe in giving other people opportunity to develop relationships and see how things work. So begrudgingly, I would be, I, I, I would be happy for, to, to, to yield that to you if you'd like to be on that. Uh, you will be dealing with some of the finest people that have ever breathed.
I appreciate that and I appreciate the experience and the ability to get to work with the Vice Mayor on the committee and see how that works, thank you very much.
Of course.
Is somebody keeping track of this? Wonderful.
And you?
W- w- well, I, I would like to just stay on the ones, I think is easiest, the ones that, that I'm on other than uh, the AG Enterprise Committee, uh, which will now be uh, Councilman Orlemans. Uh, most of the, many of the others really are um, something that it, the, the office of the mayor needs to be in that position, uh, as a representative. The only one that isn't necessarily that, I believe, is the Habitat Conservancy. Uh, and I, I, that's very important to me as well. And that's something that uh, is, it, it has benefited to have historical understanding of some of the things that we deal with countywide for our city. So other than that, I, I think just staying on what I'm on is.
And I'll stay as your backup for the ones that I'm listed.
Uh, you're, if, if you would like to.
Consider, because I already did the paperwork anyway, right?
Yes, you did.
Although that's annual, isn't it?
Yeah, I have to do the paper, but I already have a copy, I'll just change the date.
The, the one thing I wanted to bring to your attention as the alternate is ABAG. Is that something that you would like to take the lead on?
When are those meetings usually?
I think they have one a year. Um, I'm not sure exactly when they are because they changed them.
I can take the lead or the Vice Mayor can take the lead because it's um, I mean, it's plan, is it all planning and housing and all that stuff or?
Uh, it's, it's the Association of Bay Area Governments.
Yeah.
That really mainly low, recently has been dealing with Rena numbers.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, which is why I.
Do you want it or?
Um, I, I would be happy to be alt.
I would be happy to be alt, sorry, the mics are a big deal tonight.
Yeah, I can do that and um, the Vice Mayor can be alt and.
Is that all right?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, because they love me over at uh, those people.
I, I hear them praising you all the time.
All of my housing companies, they love it.
Your meetings are on.
Uh, question two for Councilmember Orlemans, is the John Marsh Trust still active in any way?
Sorry, uh, not that I've heard and I have not sat on a, a meeting.
Can staff potentially reach out to the contacts there? I mean, I believe we've got that information, right? Just to clarify that, that there is a liaison available?
I was having a side conversation, my apologies, what, which one are we talking about?
On the John Marsh Historic Trust, where the, there's a council member who's a liaison. When I was in that role, there were meetings active, but they were changing the meeting date and that's why I had to stop. Councilmember Orlemans was just saying he hasn't had any meetings. So I'm wondering if staff could reach out on behalf of council to say, remember there's a liaison, are you actively meeting at this time?
Yes, be glad to help with that.
Okay, do we have all of the positions filled?
Did you have any other changes possibly for the school interagency? We heard a couple of different things, but nothing semi-final?
School interagency?
It sounded to me like Councilmembers Mendoza and Pearson were interested in staying on that and that's okay with me?
Any further questions, any more clarification?
Just a quick clarification, so if the council ultimately elects to have the Race and Equity Committee name a liaison to the DEI Committee, that may just by necessity convert that ad hoc committee to a standing committee. So just something to bear in mind.
I don't have a problem with that at all, but I'm wondering if that's a, if there is something specific that says in order to assign a position as liaison, like how's that?
What may just be cleanest is since we actually have three weeks before the next council meeting, I have purview to put something on the agenda and I can just put that on there for action and be February 13th. Then it'd be nice and clean, there wouldn't be any questions about, it's not really agendized and brown act potential conflicts. So then we can make sure it's really crystal clear that this council body would be appointing someone to be on that school DEI Committee. Would that work with everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion on this item?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt the committee assignments shown on the screen. You guys are great, you guys, thank you staff, thank you so much, this is great. Um, as the 2024 City Council Committee Assignments and Appointments.
And councilmembers, could you please just double check and, and look at that list?
Pass my glasses down.
And Councilmember Pearson, it's just a formality, but if you could also just mention whether you're formally moving to create those new committees that the council talked about tonight, age friendly, the Budget Committee and Race and Equity, then we'll add that to the motion if that's your intention.
I turned it off. My motion is also to create the Age Friendly Communities, the Agricultural Enterprise, the Budget Review Committee, the Land Use and Development, the Race and Equity Committee and the 2023 Commissions Interview Committee. I also would like to, oh wait, we do, have to do a vote.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second.
I was waiting for Margaret.
All in favor?
Aye. So my second motion is a detail in the staff report, I move that we dissolve the BNC and the State Route Four Noise Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those items moved, thank you all very much, not even a coin flip this time. As effective as that last one was, I'm so skilled at, you know, took four flips to get. Okay, moving into moving into uh, item H, requests for future agenda items. Are there any future, new future agenda item requests at this time?
I have one.
Vice Mayor?
We discussed, well, I should, I should start with, in September of last year, we had uh, we experienced the last, at the last council meeting, hate speech. And it was appalling and it was horrifying and it caused us at the next council meeting to address public comments in person versus in Zoom. During that meeting, I um, mentioned that I thought, you know, some months down the road, maybe we should look at this again based on how things are looking in the community, what kind of, uh, if any negative comments we were getting, um, public comments or otherwise. And I think, uh, I think it's time to talk about it again. Even if it means we reconsider and have public comments held at the end of a Zoom meeting as opposed to in the beginning, so that there's still some level of protection. But I, I, given the response that we've been getting, um, not just from one person, we get it from, you know, multiple and I know I have individually and you probably have too, I just think it's time for us to have this discussion again.
Is that clear for staff, that request?
I was trying to find which policy it is, so that could be part of your request is to amend that policy to reconsider that specific policy item.
Can I say that we uh, consider and evaluate amending the policy that was created at the October, was it the 13th council meeting?
I believe it's the meeting.
Only because I just looked all this stuff up.
I believe it's the meeting and procedures rules, uh, policy.
Okay, the meeting and procedures rule, yeah, that. Thank you.
And, and just, just so we don't have to come back and do this, um, I don't think we ever wound up formally changing the language in there because I don't think it addressed when or if Zoom comments would be taken. So we understand you want to bring it back regardless of whether it's in a written policy. You just want to bring that, that discussion back wherever it lives.
I think it's just something we need to discuss again. And again, it might look different from what it did prior to when we experienced those hate-filled calls. But um, I just want to have an open discussion about what public comments would look like moving forward, Zoom, in person, beginning of the meeting, end of the meeting, the full scope. Thank you.
And um, I've gotten a lot of people reaching out about the traffic at Pioneer during school. And what they've asked is if we could have staff spend time on trying to figure out how to help because there's been a lot of near misses with all the kids across the school. Especially now that there's your apartments, they're seeing an increase. So I just think we need to look at the traffic around Pioneer. They appreciate the officers that go out, but they say it's still um, something else needs to be done and they don't get uh, crossing guards, I guess, at Pioneer for some reason. And that's a really busy street, so if we could find a way to help them, and I don't know if it's lights or, I, I don't know what it is because it's a, a main thoroughfare of the city, but um, there's a lot of near misses and, you know, worst case scenario would be that something happens to a child. So I just want to bring that back and um, see what we can do.
Part, part of me says it's just an operational issue and if you just want to ask us to work on it, we would just go do something. But if you want to change.
If you guys would just go work on it, that's fantastic, I just didn't know, like, if I could, yeah, okay, yeah, that'd be great.
So there's some traffic concern in Pioneer?
Traffic concerns, but I, at Pioneer, but I think the parents are looking for more than like, oh, everything's, you know, like, they want, they want like action steps of what the city's doing because they feel like we're not doing anything. So like, what are we doing to make sure that their kids are safe on that street?
Why don't we just take that as an action item because that would fall within normal operational issues? And then we can give you a memo back on what we've discovered and any improvements that we recommend.
That's fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we add that as an agenda item on the interagency meeting that's coming up? So that, I think, is it too late? That way it's discussed at that level as well, why they don't have crossing guards?
Yeah, the crossing guard would require some policy direction, so that would be an agenda item. But if you'll just let us work on it and see what we can come up with and then if that seems like the next step to come to, we could do a future agenda and we'll put it on the gen ourselves.
Okay, I think I was talking about for the upcoming meeting. Yeah, and, and there was a call for a future agenda item request there, not here for that.
That committee separately is being asked if you have any agenda items and we can put it on there that way.
Yes, please.
Don't do it through this process, that'll take a month.
Absolutely, no.
Great.
Any further new future agenda item requests? Seeing none, we'll move into item uh, J1, requested future agenda items. And this is to request, a request from, consider a request from Vice Mayor Meyer related to the scheduling of special city council meetings and workshops, Vice Mayor Meyer.
Thank you, um, this council has been um, historically, since I've been on, since I mean, in my awareness and this end of the dais, um, really connected to the ideas of accessibility. And I think the more special meetings we have that start at 5:30, the less engagement we have for some of these topics that are very important to the public and that we hear about later. A, a good example was tonight when Brian Oftedall said that he had spoken to a bunch of neighbors about coming to this meeting, but that they were still commuting or not home yet or whatever he said. Um, so I, I think the first part of it, it is the accessibility for, you know, commuters, it's, it's right after work, something people aren't done with work yet. And then frankly, there are some of us on council who are still working full time. So it's, I think it's a dual discussion and I, I don't think it's appropriate for every single special meeting. But when we're looking for increased community engagement or we know it's a hot topic or we know we're going to hear about it later because we've seen response after the fact on some of these issues that are really important to the public, I think we really need to think about some of these being a separate workshop, community, town hall, whatever it is. So I just wanted to open up that conversation.
Thank you, at this time we'll open public comments.
Now's the time to comment on this item, if you're in person, file a speaker card, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And I have no speaker cards and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, at this time we'll close public comment, move into council discussion.
I think it's a good day, I mean, a good idea, if we know that the public, it's something the public wants to pipe in on, that we should have it later. I mean, I'm, I think it's great that, you know, you had your town hall, but at 5:30, people don't show up. I mean, people here commute, you know, one to two hours. So I think we need to start looking at things that are resident focused or customer focused to later in the day. And if it's two nights that we have to do meetings and I would, I would rather come two nights and have people show up than just do one night early and then not have people show up.
And I forgot to say, but it was part of the original request that it doesn't, depending on the item, doesn't necessarily have to be a separate night, it could be part of a council, a regular council meeting instead of part of a special meeting. So that it's later in the day.
Uh, how, how would we anticipate deciding which, which subjects would be the most um, interesting?
This is part of what I was hoping to discuss.
So that's where we are.
That's where we are. Um, I, I, I think staff has a, a pulse uh, on what the concerns of the city are. I think anything having to do with land use is a very big deal, zoning, um, design standards, all of those things, I think are, are big enough issues within the city that we hear about on a regular basis, that we should be concerned about that. Things like homelessness, frankly, I think um, those are really key issues that we hear about on a regular basis. So I would recommend those, but certainly open to uh, other discussion on this.
I kind of think without us being able to, I mean, I, I get what you all are saying because like today's example was an example and I think the workshop before, we had one recently and there was no one here. Um, and I think it's a topic that people would have, oh, it was uh, the public works stuff. People may have wanted to chime in about and then they get an opportunity to. But I think that also sets staff up for failure if we're just leaving it up to them to try to figure out what the pulse on the city is um, without having an exhaustive list exactly as to what we would like. I would say if we're going to do that, either do it on two separate days, which, I mean, I signed up for the job, I don't mind coming another day. Um, it is a little harder on me because, you know, I, even though I, I still have a full-time job, I do leave a little bit earlier to try to get here or do something, I, I can, I have that flexibility which I know some people don't have. Um, but I would actually propose, it's hard on me being a parent to, council starting so late at night. And so um, my recommendation was if we're going to change that, it, it would be nice, um, I mean, it's, it's even, I'm going to be quite frank and honest, it is hard to watch when there are city staff that's here that don't have to present and they have, it, it starts at 7:00 PM and they've been here all day. It breaks my heart to know that they've been here all day and they're tired. And they're here, sometimes we're here till one in the morning. I mean, it's like a full 12-hour, I mean, what, 20, almost, you know, little, almost lo- longer than 12-hour shift for them with li- little breaks in between. So my request would be if we're, if we are going to start stopping having those type of topics. Because I think if we're going to do the 5:30 meetings, they should just literally be closed session. But, but, or if we're going to do 5 o'clock closed session, but I think we should start our meetings earlier, to be honest. I think we should do a 6 o'clock meeting because we could probably push a little bit more if we had that additional hour to start with. Um, my preference would be to start at 6:00 and I know that it may be difficult, but it gives an hour for some people to get here. Uh, we spend the first hour doing informational reports, the pledge. Um, um, I mean, maybe we need to push the public comment back a little bit so give people a little bit more time to do some of the items and I don't know if in order legally we can do that, um, to take the, the general public comment a little bit later. Um, just to give people time to get here, but I would just, my preference would be we start at 6:30, 6:00 or 6:30. Um, because it just, it's, it's really late, it's hard. There's other reasons why, I think that I don't need to disclose, but um, it is, is very difficult to start later than a lot of other cities start at 6:00 PM.
6:00 might be a little difficult for me, I could push 6:30, like, push it, but it um, yeah, 6:00 would, it, it's hard, right? When we have these early meetings, but I mean, I could find a way to make 6:30 work. But I don't know if we can even do that, I mean, K. I mean, Katie, you're like leaning forward.
Sorry, so just looking at what we've got agendized tonight is the scheduling of special city council meetings and workshops, so not as a general, regular meeting start time, but just those special items is kind of what we've got on the agenda for this evening.
If it's a workshop, I would say if we're going to do a workshop, can we start our city council meeting a little bit earlier to allow for extra time for the workshop to start before? So not a 5, a 5:00 or 5:30, but maybe if we start the meeting at 6:00 to add the workshop item, to incorporate it a little bit earlier. But, I mean, I hear you, if it's hard for you, it's hard for you.
I was going to say something, I just forgot. So if we're trying, we don't want to make them decide, because, I mean, everyone, it's force ranks, everything different. What if you, what if one of the agenda items, when we're going to have special meetings, is, here's an agenda item, do you want it this night or this night? I mean, we could decide in the meeting, and then the other good thing about that is then the residents would know that meeting's coming. So, I mean, I'm fine with that, like, if you want to take them, like, we have, you know, some of them scheduled, that, we could discuss all of those and go, okay, what do we want to do with these?
Great, great input, great insights. One of the opportunities that we'll have with this future gen item, if you move it forward, is to come back with a calendar with 20 working days, reducing for maybe not back-to-back with a long council meeting, and where all the commissions and committees are meeting. And if you want those same meetings broadcast through YouTube, and if you have, when you start looking at this calendar, three new committees we just added tonight, if they're not during the day, which I'm assuming they're all going to be at night, you've got even less nights available to try to get additional business done on other nights, plus your external regional boards and commissions and committees, mayor's conference, right, all the other nights that just reduce, we only got two or three extra nights where there's not conflicts to really try to get some extra business done. That's, you know, example, the amphitheater, we're going to come back with that, Trilogy, we're going to come back with that, Strategic Plan, we're coming back with that. So if we can get clear direction, we don't have to come back with things, which then makes other agendas difficult to fill and not go till 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. That's why we've been trying to get some of these workshops caught up at 5:30, but I'm hearing you, that's not working for everybody. I think when we come back, we'll show you a calendar to say, where do you want to put these meetings then, and it's going to be challenging. But that's where we need to have this discussion.
Well, I would also like to say, I think Councilmember Pearson mentioned closed sessions first. If we're starting at 5:30, then we should potentially start with a closed session as opposed to any kind of workshop. I mean, that in itself would help the commuters to have, like, say, for example, an extra half hour or hour, depending on how long a closed session is.
Yeah, and I think that's been typical, where we've tried to reserve that time period for closed sessions and knowing some of the land use decision or real estate decisions that we have pending, we're going to be coming out with a few more closed sessions coming back pretty quickly. And then we've got employee negotiations and MOUs, that's going to require additional closed sessions, so we're going to be filling up the calendar pretty quickly.
Yeah, but we've typically, since I've been here this year, we start the workshops first, and then we go into closed session, but I think flipping it would be so much better.
Yeah, we've done a little bit of both, and it depends on when we have outside council available, when we have, we think public's mostly available, and so we can definitely try to pay more attention to that, to make sure that we're accommodating the public as much as you'd like.
And what about, so there's, there's a lot of closed session meetings, we have a lot of workshops planned, do they always have to be in the same night, which pushes everything in, the schedule that much tighter?
Well, I, this is an ongoing discussion with my executive team, trying to figure how do we fit all these meetings in and what business items are the most priority? Tonight was an example of, we had some closed session items that were somewhat urgent. We had the amphitheater where we're getting ready to release the sequo, but if we're changing the project scope, it was timeliness to say we need some direction now. The Energy last meeting was time-sensitive to get that project, get some direction, for you to get the contract approved tonight. So where there isn't time-sensitive pressure, we can definitely have some more flexibility. The Strategic Plan Workshop next Monday is only there because you gave a motion back in October to do it in January, and we ran out of time until one of the last few days of January. We can certainly push that into February if you'd rather. So that one's not as urgent as some of these other ones that we've been trying to schedule. That helps.
When it comes to closed session, do we all have to be here, or could we do those on Zoom?
They could be done via Zoom.
We should consider doing all of our closed sessions on Zoom.
I would like to do all of our closes on Zoom, Katie, please, please, please.
So the teleconferencing requirements for the Brown Act, you've got traditional teleconferencing where you have to let people be where you are, I don't think you want to do that for closed session. You have the just cause or emergency circumstances, those don't really work for all closed session. So we don't have a good mechanism within the law. I hear the request, it makes a lot of sense, but we don't have a good mechanism for that.
Not workshops, can we do workshops? Like, if it's something we're not voting on, like, can we do those via Zoom? Then your whole staff can be Zoomed, like, no one has to be here.
So same answer as the last one. We could, yeah, I mean, you would just have to make your homes or wherever you're participating from available to members of the public.
Closed session might be easier because they only have to be there for public comment. Then you kick them out of your bedroom.
I mean, I don't know if we're going anywhere with this, except for the one idea about making sure we're flipping whenever possible the closed session and the workshops. And it doesn't sound like there's an easy solution otherwise, but I did want to have this conversation because I think, like I said, Brian's example tonight was a perfect example about why this is something we need to talk about.
And I do think it's good to bring on the agenda items, like the subject matter of the special meetings, like, then we can say, like, oh, you know what, we do need that that night, or no one's going to come, let's just do it at 5:30 versus we want to hear from the public, let's do it another night.
So is that a motion to give direction? That is not a motion.
We want to hear from those three.
Ah, public comments, yes. Do, at this time, we're going to open public comments regarding this, thank you.
Don't listen to that guy.
This is the time to comment on this item. If you're in person, please raise your hand. Oh, no, if you're in person, file a speaker card. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. I see no hands raised, and there's no speaker cards.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comments. Now, do I have a motion regarding this item?
I'd like to recommend that staff spend time and resources on this item. Do I need to go further into detail since we've got it already there? Any kind of recommendation on this, or?
Side conversation.
Do we have to do that?
Sorry. But I do have an idea, if you'll indulge me just briefly.
Yes, definitely.
I could come back with an agenda report that says, here's all the following things in the next quarter that we know we need to get some decisions from you on unless it's something that we weren't expecting, and calendar it with you in this meeting, it's not the best use of your time, but then you could have the buy-in about deciding when do you want something as a workshop, which days can you fit it in? Maybe that's another solution, so just something to consider.
In that case, I do follow that. So at this point, are we looking for, we don't really know that we need to say staff time and resources on building a plan, since we already have a plan. So what is the motion with that in mind? Can it just be?
Come back with some staff recommendations on how to fit all the business in that's timely, and all the meetings, and your availability, and the council chambers' availability, and we can come up with some recommendations and options for you.
And our recommendation about flipping whenever possible special meetings and workshops?
Where feasible, yes, absolutely.
Where feasible.
And just clarifying, this is all just in the context of special meetings and workshops, not every item on the agenda, because that's not part of this future agenda item, yeah.
But if you'd like to change the city council's start time, that could be a future agenda item request through any of the other three options that one's already expired for tonight.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we move into item J, the adjournment. Before I call for motion to adjourn, I'm going to turn it to Vice Mayor Meyer.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memoriam of Anthony Tony Webb. Anthony Tony Webb, we'll just call him Major Webb, was born in Pittsburgh and as a child was actually a cotton picker. As he grew, he became interested in the military. He was a major, US Army retired. Prior to that, he actually served in the Air Force. Most recently, in Brentwood, he was the District 9 Commander and proud member of the American Legion Post 202, and also a member of the Brentwood Lions Club. I first met Tony and his wife Laura when they were playing Santa Claus at an event at the VFW, and from what I understand, they did that, they did that activity together many years together. He was also an actor, a baseball player, and a stockbroker in his former life. Today, there was a memorial service in Brentwood at the church downtown, and he will be buried tomorrow with full military honors. And so I'd like for us to adjourn in memory and honor of Major Tony Webb. Thank you.
Okay, we have a first, and I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned in memory and honor of Tony Webb. Thank you.